Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Burleson County, Texas will convene in a regular meeting at the City Council Chambers, 107 South Hill Street, regular meeting place there of at 5:30 PM. Please stand for the invitation and pledges. Good afternoon. As we gather here today in the heart of our beloved Caldwell, let us pause for a moment of prayer and reflection. We come together as a community, united in our hope and gratitude. We ask for your divine protection over our town, shielding us from harm and guiding us toward a future filled with promise. In this moment, we lift up our brave first responders and dedicated volunteers and city employees. May they be blessed with strength, courage, and wisdom as they serve and protect us, embodying the very spirit of selflessness and compassion. We also seek your guidance for our town council, that their decisions may be filled with clarity and insight as they lead us towards a brighter tomorrow. May their hearts be open to our needs and the aspirations of every resident in Caldwell. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge by Mr. Novak.
Pledge an American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Welcome to the City Council meeting. It's great to see so many concerned citizens here today, as your involvement is vital for our community's growth and well-being. We encourage your participation and look forward to hearing your thoughts and ideas. Our first item on the agenda is Citizens to be Heard on City-Related Topics, and we have one, Mr. Steve Burgess.
So, here a month ago, little bit's changed since then. We got an engineering report back, so we're talking about the flooding on Hall Street. The city engineer actually finally came out, looked at it, and said that it was not built... So, the city engineer came out and has determined that the foundations were not built to the specs written. So, that was y'all's engineer that came out and saw that. Just White was with me when we did this. And I've not seen the letter, but I understand that there's a letter that has been sent to the developer, which he has not responded other than, "We'll look at it and get back with you." And that's going on two weeks. So, last meeting, we had determined someone in here thought that it was built to specs. The engineers determined that it was not built to specs, and it is shedding water improperly. And I would ask y'all to all, Texas Water Code 11.086 protects us from these actions and from people shedding water or diverting water on you. And so, that's where we're at right now. I know that the city has tried to alleviate some of the flooding in front of the houses by cutting a ditch over into someone else's property, which I don't think there was any easement, anything done, other than y'all just cut a ditch there, which that will also violate the same code. So, anytime that resident can stop that from that water coming on to them that was not naturally already coming on to them. So, if we don't have permission, then we're gonna be right back in the same boat the day that they decide, "Hey, I'm tired of all this water coming on me." So, we've got the engineer letter. No response from the developer, getting very good response from Camden. I really appreciate it, but I would ask the council, at this time, there's gotta be something to get this developer's conscience either. I would say all construction be stopped and no sales of any of these properties that are involved be able to be sold, because once they change hands, then it's kicking the can down the road to someone else. And they're gonna, you know, they're locked away in their little LLC, and they're gonna walk away from it. So, but I would ask y'all to study that 11.086. I would ask y'all to study the engineer's report. And let's move on this sooner than later. It's been four months. I dealt with the developer for three months dragging us around. So, I mean, I've got a tenant of 11 years in there that is currently looking for other housing. They have not found any in Burleson County, so now they're looking elsewhere. So, we're saying we're gonna lose two residents to Brian, Snoop, somewhere else, because they can't, because they're tired of dealing with flooding about to come in, which luckily and unluckily, we haven't had the rain. But, you know, they've invested in pumps, dams, trying to get that water shed from the back to the front before it comes in their mouth. And like I said, I've owned it 11 years until this development started, and they raised the elevation three and a half foot. I've not had a problem.
And this is the Rubicon?
Yes, ma'am. This is the Rubicon subdivision. Chandler Arden is who we've been dealing with. He acts as the front man. We really don't know who it is. So, Chandler's who Camden's been in contact with, and two weeks ago, we'll get back with you. And here we are, fixing to be 14 days down the road with nothing. And so, you know, next step's gonna be a demand letter to everyone. So, okay. Thank y'all very much.
We have consent agenda items of the approval of minutes for the regular meeting in October, the approval of the 2025 holiday schedule, the approval of longevity paid to city employees, and resolution number 112024, the appointment of Angela Bean to the position of Director of the Burleson County Apprecial District Board of Directors for the 2025/2026 term. Do you have any discussion on consent agenda items?
One quick note, the holiday schedule is a revised schedule. It's in front of you.
We have a motion to accept the consent agenda items.
Come on.
The second.
I'm selecting.
All in favor of accepting consent agenda items? If you're a hand, motion passes. Next, we're going to enter into the public hearing section, and we have four different items for public hearing. So, some of you may be here for A, B, C, or D. And so, if you're here for A, and then you're done, there may be someone here for B, C, or D. If you're not interested in B, C, or D, you can get up and leave. That is up to you. But please consider, when discussing zoning and planning issues, it's essential to focus on key points such as land use compatibility, community impact, density considerations, and compliance with regulations. Clear, concise arguments help facilitate productive discussions and decision-making. So, in other words, if someone has gotten up to speak and you kind of had the exact same thoughts, you're certainly welcome to get back up and speak, or if you feel like they have covered all of your bases, that's fine as well. We would like for you to please go to the microphone and introduce yourself, and then you can speak on, we're gonna start with A, and that is Grant Works' presentation on the components of the preliminary report of the end development zoning ordinance associated with Texas Community Development Block Planning Grant Contract Number 231600128306. We're gonna have the presentation first, and then you guys can comment.
When we get to the public comment, if there is anyone that cannot make it up to the podium, just raise your hand, and we will bring microphones to you, so that way we don't have to trip over everybody. So, Nick Hill is with Grant Works. He is a part of the grant writing team that has been handling the preliminary reports for the zoning ordinance, so I will let him take it over from here. Nick, you first. And please let me know if you have any trouble hearing me. I can try to talk a little louder. All right, maybe you can move this a little closer to me, too. So, yes, so my name is Nick Hill. I'm a planner with Grant Works, Inc., and I've been working on this preliminary report for the zoning ordinance. And so, tonight, I'm gonna lead us through a presentation to give you all a little bit of insight into how we made the decisions we made and what to include and what not to include. So, to begin, I want to emphasize that the base of everything that we've done so far is the comprehensive plan that the city adopted a few years ago. So, the comprehensive plan helped inform many of the goals that kind of guided our vision and our decision-making, and helped inform many of the attributes of this ordinance that helped achieve those goals. So, that includes things such as the districts that we decided to include, the allowed uses in each district, and the associated dimensional standards, among many of the other attributes. The future land use map also was important in establishing districts that we were wanting to include, but really, it helped inform the layout of the zoning map and the location of the zoning districts. Next section of my presentation is largely gonna focus on some of the goals identified in the comprehensive plan that are particularly relevant to the zoning ordinance, and I'll explain a little bit about how, what we had decided to include, and the ordinance helps achieve those goals. So, I quoted specific goals from certain chapters. Those won't cover every chapter of the comprehensive plan or every goal, just the ones that are relevant for us tonight. The first goal was to enhance community character and manage growth and development. Objective 3.1.2 was to prioritize areas for infill development and redevelopment in underutilized areas of the city. We achieved this through reserving residential zoning designations for existing neighborhoods to shift development interest away from largely undeveloped areas in the city or areas of the city where city utilities and resources may not extend yet, to the vacant lots in established neighborhoods to support those as the bedrock of this community. Objective 3.1.4 was to ensure high-quality neighborhoods by updating city ordinances, policies, and other development regulations to minimize the adverse impact on surrounding areas. The four residential districts that we have included in this ordinance, that is the residential, the mixed residential, mixed use, and the alternative housing overlay, are all designed to take into account the existing character and design of those areas of the city. So, we want to ensure that any new residential development in these areas will be visually compatible and compatible in terms of character with the established communities. We have also allowed PEDs or planned unit developments to create developments that have a greater mix of housing types, densities, and community amenities to create very complete and robust neighborhoods.
What are you...
I'm sorry?
What neighborhoods will that be?
So, the zoning map will cover exactly where the districts are located.
Do you need to do a copy of that?
Yes, so if the board out, the first board out in the hallway has the full-scale zoning map, so you'd be able to see there. It's also available online, so that's probably the easiest ways to see in the large scale. Yeah, of course. The second goal from this chapter was to prioritize the health and safety of the community by implementing hazard mitigation measures and environmental conservation efforts. Objective 3.2.1 was to establish policies that help promote natural and environmental conservation. So, the two ways that we went to achieving this objective was through landscaping and screening requirements that encourage their skating, so that's the use of native plants that are require very low water resources to conserve water for other more important uses, and also for the use of native plants that are more, that are better suited to the climate of this area of Texas. Objective 3.2.2 was to provide regulations that encourage development away from flood hazard areas and increase mitigation strategies to preserve the integrity of natural areas. This objective was our reason for including the floodplain overlay district. So, this district follows the boundaries of the 100-year and 500-year floodplain and provides a higher set of standards for development within that, so initially restricts development in that area to ensure that the floodplanes can continue functioning as they are supposed to. But if it is the case that a structure needs to be developed there, it ensures that there are a higher set of standards for those structures to make sure that they are prevented, protected from any flood-related hazards. The final goal from this chapter was to strengthen Caldwell's sense of place and enhance local character. Objective 3.3.1 was to promote standards that enhance the existing character of the community while providing continuity with new developments. As I mentioned, the four residential districts and really all the districts that are included are designed to make sure that any new development that would be built in accordance with the zoning ordinance would really mimic the design and character of those areas of the city, be that the commercial that's consistent with the commercial along Highway 36, or residential that's consistent with the type of residential neighborhoods around Hall Street or Tenth Street in the south, south area of the city. We also included landscaping and screening standards for areas along the key roads, so that's Highway 21 and Highway 36, to create visually appealing streetscapes, but also in areas of the city where there may be nuisance-creating uses, such as industrial operations or having commercial facilities, to ensure that any nuisances created by those uses will not impact the surrounding properties. Objective 3.3.2 was to prioritize the revitalization of downtown Caldwell while preserving its historic character. The downtown core district includes dimensional standards, allowed uses, and design standards that will seek to make sure that any new development is consistent with what's already there and to preserve the character and aesthetic of the downtown. So, this includes things like regulations on allowable building materials within the downtown, transparency requirements to specify that street-level facades must be visually appealing and have the large windows that are characteristic of downtown buildings, and zero lot lines to allow any new building to be built to fit and to be lots in the downtown and to mimic the side-by-side development of those buildings. Objective 3.3.3 was to ensure that new development enhances the quality of life in Caldwell and will be compatible with existing land uses in terms of use, density, building heights, scale, and off-site effects. As I've mentioned, this is really the overall takeaway from this ordinance, is that all allowed uses, dimensional standards, and eventy maximums that we include with each district are designed to make sure that new development is compatible with all that's already there. We want to protect the sense of character that Caldwell has developed and the type of community that it has become, just wanna make sure that no new development puts that at risk. Initially, the mixed-use district is designed to create walkable integrated neighborhoods around the downtown to help more residents have easy access to those downtown amenities and sure that people can live in areas that are walkable and accessible. And finally, the mixed residential and alternative housing overlay districts are designed to create integrated neighborhoods with a greater availability of different housing types to support housing affordability and to allow for greater diversity of housing types and housing options for residents. The next chapter that we pulled goals from was Chapter Four Housing, and the primary goal from this chapter was to promote diverse, flexible, and inclusive housing options throughout the city. Objective 4.1.2 was to encourage multi-generational housing options and designs that would adapt to changes in lifestyles. To achieve this, we allowed accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, by conditional use permit within every residential district, because ADUs can serve a very important function as like auxiliary housing for aging relatives or relatives who maybe need a higher level of care, and be brought closer to the home. In the mixed use and mixed residential districts, we allow for a greater availability, or sorry, greater variety of housing types to create housing options that may be better suited to different ages and abilities. Objective 4.1.3 was to promote medium density and affordable housing options around the downtown area to provide easy access to the existing amenities. The mixed-use district sits like a ring around the downtown, so if you see the zoning map, it's the blue district that kind of forms a ring around the pink district around the downtown. This district includes the smallest minimum lot sizes of all residential districts, a variety of housing types, and mixed-use buildings to allow for greater diversity and density of housing in this area. But again, the density is designed to make sure that the, all the density standards match the existing development in that area, so it's not getting dense or housing, but just ensuring that new housing will match that and can allow for a greater number of residents to live close to the downtown and have walking access to those amenities. The final chapter that we pulled goals from was Chapter Seven, Environment, and the primary goal from this chapter connects to what I've mentioned earlier about preserving and restoring natural stormwater systems. Objective 7.2.2 was to adopt development practices that work to conserve open space for effective stormwater management. We achieved this through impervious surface maximums that regulate what potential lot can be built with the surface that's not spaced ground that cannot serve to absorb stormwater. And so, this is meant to ensure that on each lot in each area of the city, there's sufficient open space provided to make sure that natural stormwater management can occur. And then finally, the floodplain overlay district, as I mentioned, is intended to prevent development in the floodplain unless that structure is adequately protected, and is proven to have no impact on floodplain function and public safety. The final goal that is probably the most important in how we created this zoning ordinance is not from the comprehensive plan, so this goal is to protect the property rights of owners. And so, to ensure that property owners are not adversely impacted by the adoption of this ordinance, we removed the requirement to bring non-conforming uses into conformance within 10 years. So, if you were at a previous workshop, you may have heard about this. And so, what we did was we removed this requirement, so every non-conforming use is fully grandfathered in and can continue without needing to bring it into conformance within a certain timeline. So, if you...
So, if you just bought a house in 1984, is grandfathered in?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
If you just bought a house in 1984, is grandfathered in?
Yes, so if you have a non-conforming use, so if you, if you had a non-conforming use, you should have received a letter in the mail saying that your use may be affected. You'll be able to continue that use as is, without any problems, without any setbacks, and so that use will kind of carry over through transfer and anything like that. Yes, ma'am.
You said that it would be a grandfathered in for 10 years. What happens after 10 years? It has to be grandfathered in for 10, 20, 30 years or only 10 years?
So, we removed that requirement, so I think I said that in a bit of an confusing way. There is no requirement to bring your property into conformance at any time, so the use can continue as is indefinitely.
Indefinitely.
Yes, so there is no concern that you'll have to change the use or discontinue your use.
What if you make substantial improvement on the property, 50% or 30%, does that require the entire structure to be brought into compliance?
So, the substantial improvement only comes into effect with any type of disaster that's impacted with the structure of the property. So, the destruction of the property is equal to 50% of the property's value or more. That structure cannot be wrapped back to its original use, but if it is less than 50%, so essentially, if your home is worth $200,000 and there's a tornado or something that destroys it such that the cost to restore is only $80,000, you can restore it to its previous use, previous design, no problem. So, if it's $150,000, so it's more than that 50% number, the structure cannot be restored to its previous use.
So, it would require the structure to potentially be elevated within a special flood hazard area, it's in a zone A, E, and would that elevation not just be the basement elevation, but my proposed ordinance basement elevation plus two feet?
Yes, so the current standard, I believe, is basement elevation plus one foot from the current flood damage prevention ordinance, but with the floodplain overlay district and with the updated flood damage prevention ordinance that's in the pipeline, also part of this grant, that the, those structures must be elevated to basement elevation plus two feet.
I'm sorry, but you keep using the word grant. Grant, are we gonna borrow some money to the program?
The, yeah, the money has already been, it's from the state, it's from the GLO for it's the Resilient Communities Program, so the money has already been like kind of set aside, so there is no additional funding that is like funded by the government.
Okay, so the city didn't ask for the money, you're offering.
The city did ask, so Grant Works helped the city apply for the money to fund the creation of the zoning ordinance, the flood damage prevention ordinance, and the updated building codes. So, the grant, the grant has already been issued, and so there's, there's no need to apply for additional funding or dig out additional loans to use with this.
So, the grant was for planning?
Yes, the grant was for planning.
Planning on.
Planning on, yes.
Planning on, correct, so we've not moved it on yet.
No, so this is just the, the first of three steps, so there's no adoption tonight. This is just getting information out there and putting it for council to approve or disapprove of this, this, yeah, this grant.
Now, you keep saying diversity, and you keep talking about the fact, I'm assuming you're talking about bringing in some low-income housing, some, some housing that might be affordable to folks that couldn't afford it, and I see that many times with other smaller cities, and I've read much about it, so, and what happens is, of course, you bring in these, the low-income people, they, and you develop these areas like you're talking about with us, and suddenly now, we've got several other projects in town now we're forced to do. Is this something that is part of the program, as part of the long-term plan, is to bring in these units to house low-income people?
So, I would say it's a specific plan, so it's more so about allowing different housing types.
Is it yes or no? Is the answer no?
I, I can't fully answer that, because that's out of the scope of what the work that I've been doing, so the, the purpose is, I would say, yes, to make housing more affordable, but I wouldn't say it's necessarily connected to a plan to develop certain types of housing, it's more so to allow different types of housing.
And did I hear, you also have identified certain areas to move and develop?
I haven't identified those areas, no. I, so what I've done is I've applied residential zoning to residential areas and areas of the city that are undeveloped, we've left that agricultural, so that any, so developers who want to develop that would go apply for rezoning, but basically, we wanted to create, not set an intention for those, for that land, but to leave it as being a reserve of land if somebody wants to develop it down there.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
I have a question. I couldn't hear that clearly.
Oh, sorry.
When you were talking about the difference between a floodplain and a flood, was that only, your suggestion was two foot, if we expand on that place?
Yes, so as part of the, the grant, so there are two conditions for the new flood damage prevention ordinance that we are working on, that are required as part of the grant. The first is that it matches a model provided by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and so the current flood damage prevention perfectly models that, it's that exact model. So, then the only other change that is simply required by the grant is to specify that any structure within the floodplain must have its, its base level, so that's the, you have the kind of floor of the first floor has to be elevated to, to at least two feet above the basement elevation that's identified on the floodplain map.
And what are the regulations come from?
So, this, the, it comes from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, who that covers the, those all...
It's something that's based on the plan?
Oh, yes, so...
It has to meet certain specifications for the grant?
Yes.
It's higher than FEMA?
Correct, it's, it's, it's in line with FEMA's like strongest recommendation, so the, FEMA's constantly like updating what the best practices for flood damage prevention, and so this is just applying a higher standard that is recommended by FEMA, but not specifically required based on their model ordinances. So, this is the, the GLO or the government land office's recommendation for adequate floodplain protection.
Is that something that's not canceled first?
Yes, so that would be, has to be adopted, those amendments have to be adopted by council, and so that would be sometime over the next couple of months, so that would be, be handled.
Okay, what if somebody already has, what if you know that will be grandfathered in?
I, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, so I can't make any promises. I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to double-check that, so I'm not 100% sure how the, that process works.
Nick, are you finished with your presentation?
I'm not. Do you want me to jump into the presentation?
Yes, please finish your presentation.
So, the second thing that we did to make sure that there are options available for property owners who are affected is we added the administrative exception process. It's two, there we go. So, the administrative exception process is essentially a variance, but for numerical standards, so with the administrative exception, a city official can grant a deviation of up to 15% from a numerical standard, so that includes minimum lot size, lot with setbacks, and so this is meant to ensure that if somebody, let's say, has a structure that is totally fine right now, totally legal right now, but it's maybe in a setback, within a setback once the ordinance is adopted, they can apply for this, this special administrative exception to be able to... they can apply for this special administrative exception to be able to kind of move through that process a bit more quickly and change your nonconforming structure to a conforming structure with the granting of this exception. And then finally, these special exceptions, variances and rezoning procedures that are included in this ordinance are all meant to be a process available to property owners who may be affected by any excessive hardship created by this ordinance. And so I'm sure some people in this room received the notice in the mail. I think we'll take any questions after the presentation. So you may have received a notice that said that your property or use of your property may be affected by the adoption of this ordinance. And so on that, in that mailer, there should have been, there were three ways listed that you may be affected. So I wanted to quickly cover those in a little more detail, just so you know what is going on. The first way you may be affected is through the creation of a nonconforming use. A nonconforming use is created when an existing legal use of a property is no longer permitted on that property following the adoption of or an amendment to the zoning ordinance. A nonconforming use, as I mentioned earlier, can continue in perpetuity after the adoption of this ordinance, but it cannot be enlarged or replaced with another nonconforming use without the granting of a special exception permit. There is one large exception to this rule. Texas state law allows any HUD code manufactured homes, that's manufactured home that is certified to meet the standards set by the Housing Development Development. It can allow any of those manufactured homes to be replaced with another HUD code manufactured home, regardless of zoning designations, as long as the replacement home is a newer model and is at least the same size. So if you have a manufactured home, an area where it's not allowed, you can still, you can replace that with another manufactured home as long as it's newer and at least the same size, even if the zoning code would not allow that. So that exception only applies to HUD code manufactured homes. In a similar vein, nonconforming structures are principal or accessory structures that do not conform to the dimensional density or size regulations of this ordinance. And so that is specifically, if your building is looking in a setback or is there, a mass, greater than the, the number of structures on the lot is greater than the maximum that are allowed. And so if you're affected by one of these two things, there are five options available to you. The first, as I mentioned, is to continue the use as is. If you have a nonconforming use, you can continue using the property as is. And there is no ordinance or no regulation saying you have to stop that at any time, except in special circumstances that are laid out in this ordinance. Second, you can bring your property into conformance, so you can replace that nonconforming use with a conforming use. Third, you can apply for a special exception, and that's if you want to, say, enlarge your nonconforming use or replace it with a different nonconforming use. Or if you have a nonconforming structure and you want to build an addition onto it that would go maybe into a setback or further into a setback. You also apply for a variance, and so variance is a deviation that's granted from any aspect of this zoning ordinance. So it covers uses or it can cover dimensional standards. And the fifth is to apply for a rezoning. This is the most difficult of the five because this is an official amendment to the zoning map. And so there's a higher standard of criteria that needs to be met. And so as a property owner, these options go from easiest to hardest. So the easiest is to continue the use as is, don't change how you do anything. The hardest is to get a rezoning. The second way that you might be affected is through a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit is an individually granted zoning change that allows a property owner to use their property for a certain use. Each district has their own allowed sets of uses only allowed by a conditional use permit. So if you're looking at the zoning ordinance and the use table, the uses that have a triangle rather than a square, those are all the uses that are only allowed by a conditional use permit. And so the conditional use permit is strictly reserved for uses that may have a higher nuisance associated with them, be that creating more traffic, creating visual or design inconsistency with the surrounding neighborhood. And so a conditional use permit allows for greater discretion by the city over whether or not that is the right use for that property. And in granting a conditional use permit, the city council may require that additional development standards be met to ensure that the proposed use does not adversely impact the surrounding properties. So that could be different requirements for landscaping, for screening, for some orientation of a manufactured home, including to be horizontal or perpendicular to the street. And so that can kind of cover a lot of different things. The final way you may be affected is by the new density standards that we are including. So density standards are an important component of visual and design consistency within neighborhoods. I know a lot of people move to cities like Caldwell for a very quiet, relaxed, peaceful environment. And so density standards ensure that buildings aren't getting stacked on top of each other and that the neighborhood is not getting too dense, too urban and too busy. So these standards specify the maximum number of allowable units on a given lot. All single occupancy homes, so that's things like manufactured homes and detached stick frame homes, are all limited to one unit per lot, and that does not include accessory dwelling units. And but the density standards for multifamily structures vary based on the type of structure. So for example, duplexes, for two units, to develop a duplex, you need a minimum of 0.07 acres per unit. And so this number is set based on the size of the existing size of the lots for the existing duplexes within the city to make sure that any new development will roughly about the same size as what has already been built in the city. So with that 0.07 acres, to develop a total of two units, you would need a minimum lot size of 0.14 acres. But we wanted this to be scalable, so that's why we set it at minimum acres per unit. So if someone wants to develop three duplexes on a lot for a total of six units, they would need a minimum required lot size of 0.42 acres. And so this is just meant to ensure that any of the existing occupancy that have multiple duplexes on them are in conformance with this ordinance and to allow for developments to be scalable based on the size of the land available. Some additional standards that we've included in this ordinance I want to highlight. So that administrative exception process that I mentioned earlier can help a small, like speed up the process for small numerical deviations. These type of variances do not need to go before council. We included standards that regulate the size, location and design of signs used for home occupations. We included standards that regulate the allowed size and location on a lot of smaller storage sheds. We included some heightened landscaping and screening requirements. We include standards that encourage the use of zerescaping in natural plants. And then another concern that was brought by council at the last workshop was the potential for residential development to push parking in the streets and causing congestion or traffic. So we included a requirement that all required parking spots for residential units must be provided off-street just to make sure that the streets remain clear and there aren't cars causing congestion. And finally, we did include limitations on standalone personal sheds or facilities. I'm talking about like larger garages or RVs and boats. So we specify that these structures must be an accessory structure that sits on the same lot as a principal residential structure, so they cannot sit alone by themselves in the middle of the neighborhood. And so before I open this up for discussion, I want to cover the procedure tonight before this next hearing, the hearing is on the line. So there are four options available to council tonight. So the first is if you find that the ordinance is good as is and it's right in the forward, you can approve, we can schedule the final hearing, we can bring a final report, this is essentially the same as preliminary report. If there are smaller changes that you would like to see, and there's no sort of definition of what smaller changes is, it's kind of up to our discretion. You can schedule a final report hearing, that can bring back a final report that takes into account those changes. If the council, if the council would like more time for discussion, in specifically the format of a preliminary hearing. Oh, I have, I have a wire. So if you would like to have another public hearing in this format, I recommend that you table and we can pick this back up at the next public meeting. But if there are larger changes, that you'd like to see or larger concerns about the ordinance, what I would recommend is rejecting it and we can have another public workshop, like the other ones that we've had, to have a larger discussion about this. And then we'd have another public hearing like this for a new preliminary report. So those are the options available to council. And so I'll turn this over for discussion.
Okay, so we're going to start with, if you, if you're sitting on the very front row and you would like to address Nick, now I'll start with the front row people first. Yes, sir, if you could state your name then.
My name is Kim Sanders. I have a question, a couple of questions. A couple of questions, and I think one has already been answered. You spoke about the term limit on
Nonconforming use?
Nonconforming use. If, let me address the downtown core area, that's why I'm talking about the downtown core area. There's, there's a few residences in that area right now. There is no time limit to continue that residential use, right?
Correct, yes.
Now, what happens if you sell that property?
Yes, so nonconforming uses can continue through transfer of property. So whether that's through inheritance or through sale, the nonconforming use can continue.
It can continue, okay. I think that was asked earlier, but I want to be sure about that. In that area, in that downtown core area, there are several vacant lots in that area. Will any residences be allowed to be built in that downtown core area?
So, so in the downtown? Single family homes are only allowed by conditional use permit. So they would need special approval to be able to develop that. So there's greater council discretion over whether that's the right use. But something like a mixed use building, so if you can imagine like a two-story building with retail on the bottom and residents above, kind of like the gym on Buck Street, that, like that would be allowed. But single family homes or multifamily structures would only be allowed with specific council approval if it is the right use.
I think about like a town hall.
So, yeah, any any structure that would only be used for residential use. So multifamily structures, so that anything from duplexes to townhouses, anything more than single occupancy? Sorry. Are all, would not be allowed within the downtown core. The only thing that could potentially be allowed is stick frame homes or apartments that are in the same building as commercial.
Okay. Now, if they're freestanding, if they were freestanding town halls, you know, where it's not connected together, where they would become a multilevel, multifamily. But just freestanding town halls on these lots, would those be allowed?
So it would have to follow the lot three dimensional standards, so like lot size, things like that. So I, I can't expressly say that if it's a attached structure, it could not be built if it were to be able to conform to these size regulations. But again, with council discretion, there'd be greater criteria that need to be met to make sure.
So that would, that would be a discussion that the council would have to address then.
Right, so it'd be in a format like this, it'd have to be a public hearing.
Okay, okay. Okay, did you answer my question?
I, yeah. And my name is Judy Clifford. Talking about the sheds that are on your property or on neighboring properties. I have three in my backyard, so I don't think that's going to affect anything in the zoning. But my question is having a shed in the front yard.
So the shed standards, if you're, anyone has a copy of the ordinance, section 5.05, we specify that sheds must meet the same front setback as the principal structure. So a shed cannot be placed in front of a house necessarily, but it could be placed like directly next to the house, so it's still, you can still see it from the front, but it can't be in front.
This is right in front of the house. And I guess my issue is that it's going to bring down the value of my house because it's sitting in the front yard, it's being built now. So I can't imagine that it's going to be built and then moved to their backyard. I don't think they have a backyard garden.
Judy, if you can send Melissa that address, I'll check on it.
I will, okay, yes. Just concerning that, thank you very much.
And I misspoke, I need to clarify, it doesn't specify that the shed cannot be in front of the house. It says that it must be fall the same setback. So theoretically, if the setback is 20 feet and the house is 30 feet from the street, by the ordinance, it would be able to be developed there. But so basically, all it does is has to conform to the front setback. But if it's, if it's anything that has had like a building permit issued or has been like broken ground, is grandfathered in as a nonconforming structure. So there would be no requirement to work with that.
Okay, anyone else on the front row?
Yes. What is the long? My name's Cathy Smith, and what is the long-term goal for this zoning? What are you trying to accomplish with doing a zoning?
Yeah, absolutely. So Caldwell is obviously a city that's growing, there's been lots of residential development going on over the past few years. And so the zoning ordinance, first and foremost, is meant to make sure that as the city grows, it grows in a way that makes sense and that is like safe and protective for the existing residents. So it's meant to make sure that new development does not disrupt the character that many of residents have come to put love about the city. And so it's protection from this community as a whole, from anything that could change the character of the community. But it's also protection for individual property owners to make sure that as that new development occurs, it does not, if it's, you know, built on one lot, that it doesn't negatively impact the surrounding lots. And then there's, there's a bunch of other benefits to zoning, particularly with like public health with the floodplain regulation to make sure that homes and residents aren't exposed to flood hazards and if they're within the floodplain. If, because I wrote a summary of basically like why zone and what are the benefits of it? And it's on the city's website, and I think it's included on the boards outside as well, if you would like to look, get a little bit more into that.
So you're not trying to make the downtown just all businesses?
I, so it's trying to mimic what's there. So downtown is mostly like businesses and public uses, like City Hall that we're in and the House of Chambers. So it's meant to protect the downtown as this like historic district and protect the visual feel. So it's meant to make sure that it doesn't turn into, you know, something that looks more like Highway 21 or Highway 36 with kind of large commercial lots and kind of expansive, like large streets. So it's meant to make sure that it stays pedestrian friendly and available and can be a fun destination for residents to visit. And it's, like residences would be allowed as a second floor over retail. So basically, it's meant to keep the character of the downtown as is. Yes, ma'am?
Other than a orange mixed residential district, so what is the mixed residential?
So the mixed residential means that compared to the residential district that's in yellow, there's a greater, there are more housing types allowed. So specifically in the mixed residential district, we allow duplexes and any multifamily structure of up to four units by right. So somebody could develop that without needing special approval from the city beyond building permits or site plan approval. But anything above four units, so like a larger apartment community would need special approval by the city. And so that's basically the allowed, the allowed by right housing types are stick frame homes. That's not include manufactured homes. Two-family dwellings and any multifamily structure of up to four units. Yes.
Okay, is that everyone on the front row? Okay. Mr. Jones, yes?
My name's Danny Jones. I don't know if this is the proper time to bring this up, but reading through some of the ordinances as they are, I see some things that concern me and I would like to see added. One of them in particular is section 3.04, item E. That sexually-oriented businesses will not be located within 30 people's school. And that's the only other thing that it mentions. My concern is that it should also be that schools and churches be included in that. For the protection of churches and people who are going to worship. And also, I didn't have time to read all the way through it. But many other cities our size and larger have ordinances also that businesses that sell alcohol or serve alcohol will not be located within a certain distance of churches or places of worship. Another concern I have is how are we going to control loose livestock in the city?
My question too. Is there a variance?
Excuse me, ma'am. We have in our neighborhood some roaming livestock. Chickens. Chickens are great pest control, but they're all over the neighborhood. And if we allow chickens, what else are we going to allow? That's all I have to say.
So agricultural uses like livestock are not allowed outside of the agricultural district? So those, any, like if somebody has something like that on their property, that would essentially become a non-conforming use? And so again, like that would not be specifically required by the zoning ordinance to be discontinued? But that, this would make sure that any, that nobody would be able to start a new livestock operation in a neighborhood?
Per the existing animal control ordinance, the 4H and FFA livestock animals, all of that stuff is still not being affected by the zoning ordinance, so that would stay in place.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the front row? Okay, let's go second row. Anybody on the second row? Okay, third row. You can state your name, sir.
My name's Dustin Stahlheber and I have two questions. So on the board, it references a HUD. If I'm correct, it's a public utility district?
It's a planned unit development.
Planned unit, okay. So there's no opening for additional taxation through that?
Uh, no. So the adoption of the zoning ordinance won't affect how the county taxes, because the county tax is based off of active land use. So the zoning regulation won't actually impact how the county taxes it unless you change the use based off of the zoning ordinance. So yeah, so the zoning ordinance won't affect how your property is taxed.
Okay, second question was referring to mobile homes. So what happens if a property does not have an existing mobile home and one wants to be placed there? How does that work?
So it would have to follow the use regulations. So if it is a within the alternative housing overlay districts, that's the kind of the purple hashed district, those would be allowed by right. And if it's in a mixed residential district, it would be allowed by conditional use permit. So you have to apply for a conditional use permit from the city. There would be like a discussion, is it the right decision? If it's not, how's it gonna impact? And then a decision would be granted. So if development is underway as of the adoption of this ordinance, it will be grandfathered in. But if that process isn't begun before the ordinance starts, you'd have to go through the conditional use permit process.
And when does the ordinance start?
When it's adopted, the moment it's adopted.
Do we have a timeframe on that?
Not officially, no. Um, yeah, so it will be at least a couple of months. We can't, so it'll basically depend on the decision here tonight. And so after this agenda item, there'll be a better idea, but I can't guarantee a specific date because it also will depend on time date, do we need for legal review, time that we need for essentially any more discussion like this. So I'll, and I'll.
Hi, my name's Michelle Moffery and I'm representing actually a business, Non-Virus Extrusions. But someone brought up the issue of financing the enforcement and rollout and everything that goes along with this. And my assumption is the grant won't be in perpetuity, keep funding it. So how will it be funded as far as hiring people to do the process and enforce it and whatnot?
Yeah, so that would come down more to city finances and city budgeting when it comes to that. So yes, our, the grant and the work that we're doing doesn't simply cover how it's going to be enforced. So that's up to the city in the long run where that money comes from.
Okay, we are on third row. Anyone else on this third row? Okay, fourth row. One, two, three, four.
I'm John Grounds. I am not a resident of the city of Caldwell, but I am a resident of Burleson County. I have been personally involved in obtaining a floodplain development permit within the city of Caldwell. I'm not currently engaged with any developer, any tract of land, but I probably will be in the very near future. And a couple of questions for you. One, isn't the floodplain overlay district redundant to the flood damage prevention ordinance? Aren't they both doing exactly the same thing as far as establishing finish law and mitigation requirements?
Yes, so it's, they are, the requirements are matching. Make sure that they're consistent. They get at it from slightly different angles because this is more, the flood damage prevention ordinance comes out from more of a legal procedural side. And the floodplain overlay district comes more from a land use side. So it's not redundant for like triangulation of getting at a problem from different angles. So I hope that.
Okay, well, that can be confusing when you have two different sets of regular ordinances that refer to the exact same type of development or regulations out there. So have you, second question, have you gone through your subdivision regs, your flood damage prevention ordinance? And this proposed zoning ordinance changes for this flood zone area to make sure that they are consistent? And if you haven't, I will volunteer my time to help you do that.
Yes, I have. I, so I did spend time going through to make sure that the updated standards that will be included in the flood damage prevention ordinance are also included in the floodplain overlay district. And to make sure that anything that was specified in the flood damage prevention ordinance is included in the overlay and vice versa. And then subdivision regulations, those are in the process of being updated as well. That's not part of the grant, so I haven't been working on that. But I know city staff have been working on that to make sure that when the zoning ordinance is adopted, the subdivision regulations are updated to make sure that they are consistent. So yes, that is.
Not a warning, but that's going to do something difficult for council to continue in the future because these things are going to converge in what their goals and what they stand. Just keep that in mind. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the fourth row? Anyone to start on the left side over here?
So me and Dave got similar arguments, but uh, so I keep marching on the salon on Main Street. What do you do if you don't like the way you're zoned? Because they took our salon, it's a quarter acre, on the back, on the bottom end of Main Street and put us highway for. So why are we highway commercial when we have no highway frontage? And so you said that we should be compatible with what's around us. So I got a rent house to the left, houses across the street. We just approved a subdivision across the street, but yet I'm commercial. So when we built our salon, we built it as a house. So if she puts that in there, we're turning it into a rent house. But now I'll be zoned where I can't. So what's compatible with the area? So if I'm correct, you're talking about the area, so it's Main Street, behind Walmart?
Yes, so they, it's meant to be, so this is kind of the difficult thing. So there's always going to be kind of a meeting point between two zoning districts. So if you live across the street, it might not be possible to make them consistent.
If they live on the same side of the street.
Yeah, so it's meant to be consistent with that block that's kind of between Main Street and Highway 36. And so.
Pull up this on that one, that would be on Tractor Lot.
Uh, yes, which is five separate lots, right?
And the back two lots, but that tractor lot still have the meter poles where there were houses on each lot. And there's still water meters over there. So you're telling me I can't go back and be mixed use like my neighbor is? He took mixed use all the way from 21 down Main. There's even a mechanic shop that's mixed use. But then when you get down to me, I asked Forrest while we were highway commercial. He said, well, we can't spot zone. I'm not asking you to spot zone, I'm asking you what my neighbor is, which is the whole group. So.
Oh, yeah, on the other side of OSR or the other side of me? Oh, okay, yeah. Yeah, I see where, the four lots, like a quarter of OSR, Main Street, I see.
Yeah, those are mixed.
Right.
And they're connected with all the other houses. And so you took us and made us commercial highway.
Right, so that was, that was meant because both sides of the street at that part, in that little stretch of OSR are houses. But there's that stretch of Main Street northwest of OSR, it's houses on one side and then the.
Lawn and the larger, and two tractor lots. Two mixed house lots, yeah. We tore the houses down on them.
Oh, got everything dilapidated, but.
So we can't, you just zoned this out of that, every one back to that. I mean, we're building houses and every nook and cranny in town, but you just told us we're zoned out of it. We can't do houses. That's not an option for our property now, right?
I technically, yes and no. So it's allowed by conditional use permit, so it's you pipe it, like, so there's a possibility. This is possibly applying for rezoning. But basically, it's meant to, because they are, they're currently vacant lots. They are, I just made sure that they match the surrounding properties.
Okay, so when the city says they want to make the highway frontage properties look better, landscaping or whatever, and force it on the ordinance, then our salon falls on that highway frontage like McDonald's, Whataburger, Walmart, Rook's, but we're on the back of Main Street. So how do we get our zone changed? I do not like where we're at. And I don't see why. And so look on the west end of town, there's a salon out there and there's a little bit of an orange. So it's mixed use, that salon on 21 on highway, and they're mixed use. But yeah, our salon on the back of Main is red, full highway commercial. And then another thing, when we start doing permits, are the zones gonna have different permit fees?
It'll be the same permit fee for every zone.
It's never gonna change?
No.
I don't know, it's like I'm just saying. So I have a lot of issues the way we're zoned. I want to change because you just said the hardest thing to do is rezone after it's accepted. So I'm asking you now to change my zone. Why, if it leads them, you say it's not gonna change taxes, but okay, we're zoned this commercial highway frontage on a backstreet. You know, come on, as you're saying, the permits won't be different. Well, if we decide to enforce ordinances on certain zones, we fall on a zone that we don't, we're not compatible with. I can't be highway frontage, you know? How can I be compatible when I don't, I'm not on the highway. So why should I not change the mixed use? That's all I'm saying.
No, that's a fantastic point. And so how do I get that changed?
And who would be the one to do that? And when could it be done?
If there's specific requests like that, that was, that was why we asked for people to email the development or contact me and then get those requests in so that the council could review those as part of this. And so it was in that letter. But I mean, you being here tonight is also part of that process. So if any of the minor changes that are brought up tonight, the council can ask staff to go back with the grant team to make some of these changes and adjustments if they are deemed necessary or deemed that the council sees them as appropriate.
So, because I don't want anything to happen to the city to toss her war mine being zoned as commercial highway frontage. You know, Walmart can absorb a higher cost of a permanent app or whatever, but having a haircut, city don't have to hang down where she's not in, shouldn't be in that zone. So our request might be changed, but I didn't see the email.
I'm going more, I'm with my son, I'm back here, I'm 36. I have a land next to Brucey Brothers, Walmart. Y'all have taken the whole thing as commercial highway. And that part of that is that lots on the end, that is not commercial. Later in the holes is still there.
Okay, so that's, is that at the, this corner? Oh, okay. So it's that same area?
Right, right, right. A whole strip.
Okay.
And there is another piece of land here in town, right next to 21. They got aggies in it. Can I fill one of them out? I don't need all mine. And I'm not gonna fill it. I like to have the aggies in it. That's a side of Central Left, just all.
So the aggie, it's not an ag exemption, it's just agriculturally zoned, so that was like undeveloped property.
That's where I want to go.
If there's no property, if there's not a water meter on it or anything, then sure. We can look at changing it to agricultural. If it meets the same existing lot size and all of that.
I mean, yes, and so, you know, since you presented that today, you have something that we can.
So we should email the city council, let's tell them.
No, so it's on the public record tonight, but if you wanted to request it before this meeting, then that was something that you could have emailed.
Okay, so let's start on this side.
What I'd like to know is, at the beginning of all this talking, is it possible for a citizen to get a print of everything that was said from the beginning to now? Do y'all have it recorded?
Yes, ma'am, it's on YouTube. You can go watch the live stream version.
So anybody in town that has YouTube can listen to everything that is said, so that they can do it from home and they can make notes of that. Because here has been, I have been sitting here listening, people saying, what's that? I don't know, what's that? So they need to be able to study it and review it before they can make decisions and ask questions. That's what I want to know. At the beginning and throughout, a lot of, I have heard one word that has been used recently. Character. Okay. Would you please define character? He said, the bay, we want to stay with the character of the area. It's not with the character of the area. Okay. Also, and what is allowable and what is not allowable? What I would like to know is, who or what entity and what specific individuals determine the character of what is allowed? I mean, if you say it's not in the character of the area, well, what is the character? So can they give people, these people that have been working for many years and they have their homes and they work very importantly, okay? And they're not in the character. Will you be able to, if they have a question, to say, what are you doing wrong? What are you doing? What's out of character? And what is allowable and not allowable? Example, they'll say like, for instance, the window size. Your window is not the correct size. That was an example. So would they be able to come to an individual and expost who was in a dispute with? So who makes the decision? Who determines the character and the design? And it looks like from inexperienced people, that there might be blanket regulations. The character, well, who will determine it? They're slow enough. Can you tell us that now?
Yes, so the character, I would define the character as the visual aesthetic, the look, the feel, the lifestyle.
Does everybody in here know what the visual aesthetic? Does everybody up here know what the visual estate is? Everybody, that means it looks nice and it goes with, it looks good for everybody. For instance, a friend of mine, probably thirty years ago, lived in Dublin, which is outside of Houston. She bought a nice little house, very nice neighborhood. And, uh, she wanted to paint the trim on her house. But she was not allowed to paint it without getting the permission of whoever was in charge. So what I'm saying is, to what extreme, is there an extreme, whether citizens of Caldwell, before they can do makes a decision, who would they have to, have to fill out a permit for everything? For instance, y'all said that the grandfather thing, which is very good to hear, is indefinite. It is an indefinite thing unless, uh, uh, you change and you, you know, move your house out. Then you have to start over, you just build a house, that's probably just an immobile home. Okay. But indefinitely, uh, but then later on it was said, indefinitely. Except, indefinitely except in special circumstances. Now, that seems to be a contradiction. To me, indefinitely is indefinite. But you said, oh, but in special circumstances, it's not indefinite. Can you give me an example of that?
Yes, so the only two circumstances where non-conforming use, uh, would not be able to continue are if, uh, that property is destroyed.
By tornado.
By like a tornado, or, so there, there are provisions specifically specifying, I can't remember off the top of my head, which some, some disasters count, some don't count for instance.
I think you said hood. You can cut them some slack.
Yes, so.
Why did somebody had a tornado come through? Okay, and it's gone. Okay, but then you, the person, I don't know, this is a tornado, we might have to get into religion on that. But anyway, but, but they, they lost it in a tornado, but they, because of something, would not be able to replace it. Uh, I hope that doesn't happen anyway. But I just wondered what would happen in that circumstance? Would that be allowed, is they allowed to be grandfathered and replaced? Because there's been a twist or hit West Caldwell, uh, a couple of times the last twenty years. And people just picked up the house and moved back over ten feet and then worked on it. Now, I don't know if it was in that fifty percent thing or not. You know, but, but I just wanted to see what would be allowed and what would not be allowed. And the main, well, the main thing is, who makes that determination? When you're up for murder, you got twelve people, you're going to decide if you're going to die. Okay. Well, here in Caldwell, if you want to do something, such as I want to put some shutters over my windows, I go with canopy, so it doesn't rain in there. Okay, who determines if I'm allowed to do that? I do have to fill out a form for that. Okay, are there specific people like one, two, three, four, and five? That's what I want to know.
Yes, so how, basically how a house looks, so paint color, stuff like that, is not regulated by the ordinance, so it's not like an HOA. You don't need a, uh, sort of approval to design your house a certain way. It only regulates like the use of the high load structure. So the diff, it'd be a difference between a manufactured home and a stick frame home. Oh, so stick frame home is like a, like a traditional house with like a, um.
Like a stick?
Yeah, so like a wooden framed house. Um. And so, uh, so we wouldn't, so there wouldn't be concerns over the design of a house, just the type of house that it is. And then that the decisions over things like the additional use permits are made by the city council. Uh, so it's a, it's a jury of eight, or, no, six, five.
I think it's five.
Yeah, so it's a decision of five regarding conditional use permits, variances, special exceptions, and reasons.
Because the reason I add that, because I, I do not have experience in that. When I was meeting with the Ferguson County citizens, what is my name? Ferguson County paper. And the gentleman over there in Coppers Hollow, I think he was talking over, no, wasn't he? And he wanted to pick a little, little thing that they used to spell because he wanted to carport. Okay, and, uh, then he was turned down because, uh, it was not in the character of the neighborhood. Or something like that. And, but then some of us, I think, four people voted against it, and one was not there or something. But one of them said at the end, and they, I think he went back, I don't know the name. And I think it might have been determined that they might have allowed him to do it because they said there are other people in Coppers Hollow that wasn't allowed to do that. So, you know, it's getting very, because they said it was not, uh, now the word wasn't necessary, something like that. Maybe somebody wasn't crippled. But he's just, it's things where, where everything, what is not, what do you, what are you allowed to do without filling out a permit? For instance, I asked somebody years ago when they were starting bulldozer, bulldozer down the houses. You know, pushing down, you know, Caldwell is very good about getting up the bulldozer. And pushing down a big concrete building and putting up a ten bar. But anyway, what it is, they said, uh, what is allowed? And so I had someone come and ask for it. And it used to, several years ago. And I said, well, I need a permit to replace the boards. One or two boards in my porch, it's blocked. And he said, oh, no, you don't have to do that. Well, I just wanted to know how much can you do without having to fill out a permit? Because I had seen a couple of houses, hey, was a good idea. I don't know what they call them, the little thing that throws up the windows.
Like an awning or?
The awning, yes. And it was there on OSR, and that, they'd been there for several years. It's very good. But I wondered if, uh, that would be changing the character too much.
No, so things like that, like individual design aspects of a house, wouldn't it be covered, regulated by the zoning ordinance? It would have to be up to the city, to these building codes, if it is work that is required to, uh, have a permit. Uh, the, the building codes do, uh, exempt certain types of work from requiring a permit. I can't specifically off the top of my head, um, but so that.
So you need permission, is what you're saying?
Right, so but something, yeah, so the, the zoning code is not a homeowners association, it's not telling you what your house can look like. It's just telling, saying what types of houses could go with.
Well, the last thing I want to say was two more. You need one, you're very, very, okay. One is, what's going to happen to that donkey? Up on OSR? I've been going by that donkey for years. Well, just going by that donkey for years, and I'll look out there, and I think, isn't that a lovely picture playing there? You know, I know, he's been there since some of these, but he's still standing out there wondering what's going to happen here. And I don't know who he belongs to, but I just wonder this. And the other thing I wonder was, how much it means to pay grant work for all of this dummy? I, I mean, I'm not saying you're supposed to do this free. Well, I just wonder what the cost was to the city of Caldwell for having the dummy. Grant works.
And it's, so the way it works is it's a, it's a grant, so ninety percent of the funding is, is provided by the state. And there's a small match, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. But, so for the three things that are included in the grant, that's the zoning ordinance, uh, updated building codes, and an updated flood damage prevention ordinance, it's a few thousand dollars, but I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. But so most, ninety percent of it is coming from the state.
I wonder where that gets money.
That's a good point, yeah.
So, I'll be quick, I promise. Oh, my name is Andrea Butler, by the way. Um, so we bought some property off thirty-six now. And we bought it as residential or commercial. So right now we're using it as, I guess, commercial for a business. And we want to turn it into like, or build some duplexes on the property. So is that not?
Um, is that in the, the, the mixed residential part? So, uh, quadplexes, um, are only allowed by conditional use permit in the mixed residential, so you, uh, have to go through that application process to get that approved by the city. Um, let me just double check and make sure I'm correct. Yes, so by conditional use permit only, so it's just me that there's a, an extra like step to make sure that that's, but to get council approval to resolve that. So it's not specifically outlawing it, it's just adding an extra condition.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Act this way. Oh, I'm sorry, one more question. So on another property that we own, um, we have a smaller, like, home on it, right? And if we were wanting to move it, we could still, because I heard you say something about, um, or it was on the screen, zero point seven, you can only build a single unit, um.
Right, so that, uh, that's for a duplex, so, um.
That's what we want to put on the property.
Oh, yes, so basically for a du, so a duplex, you need a minimum of zero point zero seven acres per u, uh, per unit, so for.
Per unit?
Per unit, so for a duplex, you need a minimum of zero point one four acres.
Oh, yes, perfect, thank you. Can you come into the ground?
Y'all, we have a barn dominium in the city limit.
Can our dominiums be built in the city limits, or which zone would that be allowed? Barn dominium.
Barn, barn dominiums? I'm actually not sure, but. That term is. Gotcha, okay, so, um, if the barn is used for an active, uh, agricultural use, that would not be allowed in residential district? It's just a child, that's, as long, as long as it is, uh, conforming to the city's codes for, uh, residential structures, it would be allowed as a stick. I believe, I believe so, of course, do you?
Yeah, so it would. Depending on where it's at and what the zone is, I mean, right now, barn dominium would fall under the agricultural category, so it's not listed under the residential use category.
Instead of a stick house, it's just a tattered house that's made of metal, with a metal frame, and they sometimes add some.
It would be.
Gotcha. Okay. Yes. Yeah, I can't. Go ahead, Forrest, you have to say something. So, um, in, uh, section four point, uh, one zero of the, um, ordinance, they, uh, we specify allowable types of building materials for each district. And so steel, aluminum, metal, this is typically for siding, so, uh, what does the outside of the building look like? Um, steel, aluminum, metal would not be allowed in the residential districts as like visual of the outside, uh, facade. Uh, but that would be allowed in like the agricultural district or general commercial, highway, commercial, or industrial. So specifically to the standard of built from metal, it would not be allowed.
So is there a percentage? Because usually the barn dominiums are, you know, like maybe thirty percent in Austin stone, and, you know, they may have. But the interior, like the skeleton, so it's made up. And so you don't see that.
I, so I, the ordinance doesn't specify inside versus outside?
Hi, my name is Tony Sli, and I'm concerned about the zoning involved for my mother's property at four oh four East Buck. You have her zone as commercial. It is the, uh, only residence on that, on that street. So if she loses her trailer house and fires, it just goes to commercial property, she not going to be able to, uh, build on that property or her house.
Is it a manufactured home?
It is.
Uh, manufactured homes can be replaced, no questions asked, regardless of zoning, it's obviously the newer model.
So what about the, what about the zoning that would be a commercial property?
So, um, that would make the house a non-conforming use, and so it would, um, be allowed to, to continue. Uh, with, being allowed to continue in the sense that the city is not going to make you stop using it for later.
But you'd have to get a permit if it gets destroyed in a natural disaster?
I mean, you would need the requisite like permits to place a manufactured home. But you wouldn't need a, a conditional use permit, especially zoning permit to replace it because the state allows it to be replaced.
So basically, if it gets destroyed in a natural disaster, it's up to the community to whether she can put her house back on it?
No, it can, it could be, uh, because it's a manufactured home, as long as it's a HUD code manufactured home, it can be replaced without any, uh, necessary approval to, just to place it by the council. Uh, so that would fall under the, uh, so if it's a, this is a regular house and it's destroyed more than fifty percent, it could not be brought back up to the standard without a special exception permit. So there is a process in place for, uh, to get approval to be able to bring it, to replace it essentially.
So we would have to buy, get a permit?
It's not, it's, it's not, sorry, so the permit word is a bit of a, uh, bit confusing, it's not actually a permit, it's a cross, it's, it's more of a, a right granted. So the permit's a bit of a misnomer? The city council. Well, yeah, so, yeah, the city council will have to. Yeah. Correct. Correct, so, yeah, decision by the council.
So we also have another property on, on Bank Street. And it's a trailer house as well, but it's on a very small lot. And it's, it's zoned as business and residential. So if it doesn't fall into the, if the land is too small for the trailer house, you say its grandfather did it right now, but if somebody was to move it, we would fall back into having to get a permit or build to standard?
Right, so, um, if a, if a non-conforming use is, is abandoned, so, uh, there's a couple of things that I mean, but, uh, like moving the manufactured home off of the lot would most likely be considered as abandonment, abandonmentment? You can't recontinue the use again. Uh, so then.
This particular property is going to be too small for a house.
Right.
I mean, it's a corner lot, but it's too small for a house, I mean.
Right.
And then the other thing, with that particular property, we have to park in the street. It's a side street, so she's not going to allow, we won't be able to park on the street anymore.
No, that's just for new development, so it's not saying that you can't park on the street. It's just saying if they want to develop a lot, they need to provide enough space off the street to, to, uh, to park. And then they can't say, oh, we provided parking by, because they can park on it. It has to be like a driveway, a carport, a garage, something like that that's off the street. So you'd still be able to park on the street. There was, it's not like a, a parking restriction sign.
So I don't want to go about the, the place on Buck Street to get it removed from being in the commercial zone if you have it into just residential.
Um, I mean.
Because you have a park across the street, you got it, you got it classified as commercial, but you have no truck signs all down that area. Uh, so you're going to have commercial vehicles running next to the Davidson Creek Park. And that's a no, no truck route in the city.
Oh, okay. Um.
She's not, she's, I think it's, the letter said she's thirty-sixth, uh, frontage, but she's not.
Right, so the highway commercial is, um, doesn't exactly mean it's on the highway, it just means it's a certain type of commercial that's kind of matches what's along that, along thirty-six, so that's like that larger lot commercial, like car dealerships, equipment sales, things like that. So it doesn't necessarily specify that it has to be on, uh, place to have frontage on the highway, it's just kind of in that corridor along the highway. So that's why that's something that's made supply. Um, but again, because, um, it's grandfathered in, she wouldn't have any problems continuing.
Okay, okay, so what, if it does go through, so it comes back in and says that she's not up to standards for, because she has three, three sheds on the property, carport, two carports. And the property's been developed over the last thirty years, so it's been residential.
Right, so that's up to how the city enforces it, well, like what, what department, what, uh, specifically, like how that enforced. Um, because it's a non-conforming use, we're always going to come and tell her to stop. And we don't specify a maximum number of sheds allowed, we only specify that it has to be below a certain size. It has, there'd be specified like specific setbacks for that. Um, so the three sheds and the carports, she will, there will be somebody coming to say, you need to tear this down. Um, it'll all continue, and if, say it is with, like, located within a setback, it would then be a non-conforming structure. So again, it would be allowed to be, to continue, uh, with no problem.
So no, no conformity, you're just saying that it doesn't meet the standards of the code?
Essentially, so essentially a non-conforming use means, um, if that lot were to be vacant, no, you couldn't develop what's currently on it.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah. Correct, so it's grandfathered in, you have no problem, you can continue your life without needing to worry about the city not getting it or saying, stop.
Uh, my name is Rodrigo Hernandez, I'm going to be speaking on behalf of my dad Javier here. Um, I live in a residential area. He has a trucking business that's registered to our residence, but he doesn't have the H two wheel parked there, he has a park that the Rocky Jeep trucks on. Because his business is registered with the house, does that mean we would have to get a non-conforming permit? Because it would be something commercial. Because it would be something commercial in a residential area.
Uh no, so that would be, so that would all mostly be under a home occupation, which is allowed within residential districts. Yes, it's allowed within residential districts. And so essentially, the home occupation is fine to basically continue, like it's an office. Uh you're like, you have a, you know, a desk that you work from. And so you can have like a small sign advertising it, you can still use it that way, there's no problem at all. It's just you can't use it for uh, but you can't park the eighteen wheeler, you can't have like large storage facilities. Or if you're a carpenter, you can't have a giant like woodshed workshop on there. So if you're basically using your, the home as an office, that's no problem because it's a home occupation and that's allowed. So it should not be a problem.
Okay, and one more thing though, um if, even if we did have to go get a permit, how much would the permit cost?
We haven't, the city hasn't uh set fees yet.
So the permits are all on the city's fee schedule, which is adopted every fiscal year. So in October, there's a new fee schedule that's adopted, that the council adopts in line with the budget. And so the permit fees are established at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is October first.
There's um someone behind you.
Hi, my name is Shirley Smith, and I have a question about, there's these uh RVs that are parked in people's driveways, and people live in them, like their grandma, grandpa. Uh and that causes those cars to be parked on the street. And somehow they know when a praiser's coming and they move the RV and puts cars back in the driveway. Is that allowable to park your RV in your driveway?
Uh yes, so the zoning ordinance doesn't specifically cover that. Uh that's covered under Article three point zero six. It's, it's put in with the uh manufactured homes um ordinance. And so um to my knowledge, there's no restriction on parking your RV at your house, but there is a restriction on occupancy, because you can't occupy an RV.
No, they live in.
Right, yeah, so you, so. Yeah, for the city, you can't live in, in the RV. Um and so then it would, it would come down to enforcement, which you mentioned, you know, moving around that, but.
Yeah, and uh the, so uh is the big ice shore downtown, is that non-conformant usage? I mean, uh what are you gonna do? Because that doesn't mean any of the zoning is that.
So um that is, that's uh considered public administration, so that is allowed within the downtown, so, but as it is.
I thought we wanted church.
Well, the city hall and the, you know, council chambers we, we are in are also within the downtown, so that's why we allow it because it's, and with the courthouse as well, it's very common for downtown to have civic or like public uses like that.
But it's run down, it's all rotted inside.
Be patient, Shirley. Be patient, Shirley. Be patient.
Well, can you tell me something?
No, it's in litigation, so just be patient. Do we have any more zoning questions?
Good evening, mayor and council and city staff. I just wanted to say thank you for the many opportunities that there have been throughout this process, including as part of the comprehensive plan that was done years back to address whether or not Caldwell was ready for zoning. And I really feel like this is a great opportunity for zoning in this town. I understand the different proposals that's been made and respect the items that's before you tonight. I did also want to request or recommend that a planning and zoning commission or some type of entity be formed, because as with any ordinance, it is difficult to get it right the first time. And so I'm sure there will be times when a revision needs to be made or a proposal um maybe would come before city staff for additional consideration. And so just wanted to put out there a citizen board related to the formation of the ordinance may be beneficial in this case, and I appreciate the time tonight.
That's a, that's a great point, and you sound like you know your stuff. So the city council acts as a planning and zoning commission until one is appointed. So if the city were to appoint a planning and zoning commission, they would take over responsibility for granting variances, special exceptions, so that, so, but until then, the city council handles that responsibility.
So again, I'm back. This is not about zoning, but it is about character. And I do want to say, last year, we were dragged down to our kid's school, which was quite embarrassing, to um, we were, we were asked to have our cabin skirted around the bottom. Yet our neighbors on the commercial property that we own have a home that is, that needs to be condemned. And I see nothing is done about it, and it makes our place look real bad, I mean. So when will something be done about that?
So that's a part of the building uh standards, and so that is under chapter three of the code ordinances. And as part of the building foot updates, there will be updates going into enforcing how to go about the process to uh address structures that need to be condemned. So that'll be a part of that other update that we're working on as well.
So that's not part of the update that you're working on, but we were contacted last year. Now, we contacted last year, so we were thinking of plans that day and then per day that our home was not, our rental property was not started.
So there is a code enforcement in place already. This is going to be addressing dilapidated structures more in detail.
How soon?
It'll be whenever we get through the process of updating the ordinances and presenting all of it to the council for their review.
Next couple of months?
I would say next couple of months. Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for their efforts in bringing out someone very knowledgeable about putting together a zoning ordinance for the city of Caldwell. A lot of you don't know this, but in nineteen ninety-two, Billy Brodick said I along, was brought up to the city council, and their answer to me was, Brad, it's just not time yet. Well, I'm, I'm doing backflips on the inside, you can't see me because I'm kind of fast. But uh in, anyway, so I'm, I'm very happy about what I see here tonight. And uh I fully support, fully support zoning in Caldwell. Now, what I've heard tonight is a very, very comprehensive plan that most people cannot understand because this young man is very knowledgeable, he had a lot of information, and he didn't have near enough time. I'm just telling you.
Oh, absolutely.
So I sit through these meetings all the time when people try to give me three hours' worth of information in thirty minutes. At some point, you just, your brain gets numb. And I'm sure a lot of people got numb tonight. But I just want to say, I, I'm totally in favor of zoning. Uh I believe that we do have a lot of work to do, council, on, on some issues that are outstanding here. They've been brought up, and uh I personally am looking at this and telling everybody here, I don't want you to be uh afraid of zoning. Do not be afraid of zoning. They mentioned tonight you're gonna be grandfathered, and all that means is that you can keep doing what you're doing, that nobody's gonna come and, and make you move out of your house, that's not gonna happen. And, and so you, you don't need to worry about that. And for those of you who have been zoned into a commercial slot, the council has the full ability and authority to give you a variance on that, to see that you, like, was just discussed with Mr. Sli over here, you'll be able to, your mom will be able to live her lifetime without any problems. So that's what I wanted to encourage you to go away from here tonight, is that your council is doing a good job on this zoning deal. They brought in some experts, which I'm very pleased about, had a ninety percent cost share, which by the way, I don't understand grants, but I'll tell you, if you get a ninety percent, uh a ninety percent grant with a ten percent cost share, uh that's as good as it gets with the federal government or the state government, which this happens to be a state grant, is that right?
Right.
So it can't get any better. It's a win-win for Caldwell. So I do want to applaud Camden White and, and those that were in charge of bringing in grant works, but I do also want to caution you, don't move too fast. The citizens here are a little bit dizzy with all the movement that's been going on the last couple of years. So just slow down a little bit, breathe, you're headed in the right way. I'm down here tonight to say, I can see light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not a train. You gotta just keep right on going the way you're going, and you'll have a good ordinance. And remember, when that, when these people come up here, like myself at some point, and need a variance, it's real simple. You just look at each other and say, yeah, we're gonna give you a variance, no problem, you go back home. We do it. And then Forrest, whoever it is that writes it down, changes the books, and we're all good. You know, that was one of the things that, that I wanted to do in nineteen ninety-two when I originally brought it up, was to put in a simple, a very simple zoning, basically on thirty-six and twenty-one, and to stop all of the businesses from locating within the city inside the residential areas. Now, from what I can see, that's what you're attempting to do right now, is to stop that. And, and, and I applaud you. I, I, I never thought I would say this to the city council because we've been at odds on a lot of issues, but I can tell you tonight, I'm, I'm very pleased about what I said. So I apologize for taking this much time, we're all tired, and I know there's more people that need to speak, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Hi, um my name is Tina Gitter, I just want to say a couple things. I'm not personally affected by the zoning map. But I am, in a sense, as, we're transplants here, we live here, going on four years ago now. We picked this town because of what this town is, the size of this town. The fact that um I can go over to the park that he's talking about and see cows whenever I go over there. That's what we came here for, and we enjoy it. And I'm not gonna lie, whenever I say I don't like the fact that everybody is trying to build this town into South Houston where I came from, granted, I know it'll never be that big, but, but, you know, my point being, there is Brian, there is Brenham, there is Austin. I would guess that most of the people, most of the people that live here have either lived here their whole lives or moved here to get away from overpopulation. Nobody wants it, or people that live in small towns like this don't. And if they do, then they generally move to more populated areas. And I feel like, like the whole housing addition behind Walmart, I was shocked when I saw it, because I mean, I go live there. You know, it's nice to look over and see an open field. It's nice that we have the town that we have in downtown to bring in so much because we sit on two major highways, really well-traveled highways, without moving however many thousand people we're trying to move in with all the new housing zoning here, there, and putting everything else up. But that's just simply what I want to say about it, so I thank y'all very much, and y'all have a good night.
Yeah, that's a, that's a fantastic point, and that's exactly what I mean in terms of character. And we want to make sure that if and when Caldwell grows, if and when there's new residential development, it doesn't get rid of that character that some people have lived here.
So that's what it has to carry, but the problem is if the character does get lost. I'm, when I, okay, let me, let me just back up one little bit, um, okay, so where we, I literally just came from, okay, it's down by Galveston. I lived on Galveston, and yet I moved inland after the hurricane. Okay, so what you're saying, character that you're not gonna lose, the little bitty part that we moved to, unfortunately for us, was an HOA subdivision, but it was a very small subdivision. And within the three years that we were there, there were already three hundred houses, but again, that whole area right there actually had nothing there, it was fields, and then you went down to Santa Fe, it was fields all the way down that way. You can't say that adding houses is not going to add more stuff. Does this town need something for families? Of course. You know, maybe a swimming pool, maybe a skating rink, maybe a movie theater, yes. But people like me that are moving to really tiny towns are moving to really tiny towns for a reason. I don't want my kids, you know, having to deal with some of the same things I dealt with where I came from, which is what you bring when you bring tens of thousands or even thousands of people into a town. Your crime rates rise, uh just other things, you know, I have to pay attention. I'm not that I don't pay attention to my kids, okay, but I have to pay attention specifically, okay, if I walk into a Houston store, my kids are lights to me. Here, I need to be born, and I can literally, like, be ten feet from me and I'm fine. You know, I'm not worried that somebody's gonna try and snatch up. Small towns bring that kind of stuff. Most of these people know everybody. Where, you know, I mean, we're learning to, you know, meet people in, in, you know, the town and the community. But you cannot say that bringing more housing in, which brings more people in, is not gonna bring everything else, because then it's just a snowball effect, and it gets bigger and it gets bigger and it gets bigger. And like, literally, this is the best season I've ever had. My kids can enjoy being in a small town, walking around, playing with the cows, you know, whatever. And then, you know, now I'm talking about rezoning some areas, I love over by the park. I mean, it's the most peaceful, peaceful place over there because it's pasture. There's nothing there, no stores, no nothing to look at, whatever. And that's where I'm coming from. And if somebody sells, I know, sorry, if somebody sells, I understand that if, if it's grandfathered in, you know, okay, you know, maybe they pass it down to their son. But as soon as he sells his property with those cows, guess what? The developer's gonna buy it, and then they're gonna throw up apartments or houses or whatever. And then that changes the whole aspect of what's over there now. That's my opinion.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Hey, I want to speak just coming in a little bit because of this panel.
First of all, thank y'all very much for all of your hard work on this, like, tour for this project. I have a couple of requests for the zoning map, I have ID numbers if that's helpful. ID six one one zero one and ID three four eight five zero is currently zoned agricultural district. It's a property that is currently under contract and I believe already been brought before city council for residential use. And we would like to have that zoned for residential use at this time.
Okay, yeah, so uh do you be able to email that request, Forrest, just so we can have the, the proper, the big one?
And then additionally, there is property R number one six four nine six. And that property is currently zoned as highway commercial. But the adjoining property that is part of this property is R number one six four eight six, and that is zoned residential. And we'd like those both to be highway commercial.
Okay, yeah, so if you include that all, just, you know, everything, right, that would be.
Okay, and then the um other property is currently zoned, is that addition to Ennah Hill, which I believe has already been brought through state council as well. Um that's currently zoned for agriculture, and we'd like to go ahead and have that updated to residential, and I can have that to the mall as well.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Kim Haven. I don't live in Johnson County or Caldwell, but I'm in business here. And my concern is the fact that the business is in mixed residential area as a storage facility. The supporting uses and accessory as listed in section three C isn't defined in section eight.
I'm sorry, could you, uh, excuse?
Okay, so mixed residential district, limited accessory and supporting uses that are consistently existing with a special character of a neighborhood. I got a storage facility. There is no definition for accessory or supporting, well, there is accessory.
Yeah.
It relates to storage here.
Okay. Is that, so um just, is that a, like a larger, like, commercial, like, storage, like? Is that, so, um, just is that a, like, a larger, like, commercial, like, storage, like?
It's surrounded by county roads and houses.
Okay, so it, but it's like one where there's like, you can rent a storage unit. Okay, um, yeah, so that's, yeah, so we're not allowed by, uh, by right in the next residential. So it would be a non-conforming use. Um, the purpose is to.
So that's a grandpa's it?
I mean, it, it is. Yeah, so it's fully grandfathered. But just, I just, it is a non-conforming use. Uh, so again, you allow it to continue operation. There's no problem. City's not gonna tell you to stop. So there's no actual change that you need to make.
Okay, that has to apply green premise or anything like that?
No.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Forrest, Forrest, tell them there's some seats up here.
Yeah, there's more seats.
My name is Bruce Alford. I'd like to first thank the council for all your hard work. Uh, one of the problems is that I would say this has, uh, been coming for a while. Uh, needs to happen, but I also agree it needs to be walked through very slowly. And listen to the public, listen to your constituents. And don't just act the knee-jerk reaction. Uh, but again, thank y'all for your efforts. Uh, I would like to be on the, on the record for objecting. I sent an email in, like, I was calling on my certain properties, objecting to the different usage. So I'm not gonna get into the details. That's all we need to do, I think. Uh, one thing that I've learned in this meeting that concerns me a little bit is our restrictions are higher than FEMA a lot of other larger cities. Uh, how did we come up with wanting to be more than FEMA actually recommends?
So, um, it, it's still recommended by FEMA. There's like a baseline that you have to be at, but they recommend being above that. And so it's a requirement from the grant from the GLA, the government office. And, uh, so that's where the, this would be numbers come from. But FEMA is slowly starting to, uh, push their standards a bit higher as flood damage becomes more common. Uh, especially kind of in this, uh, slight coastal, coastal inland area of Texas. So, um, we are kind of jumping ahead of some of the stuff that is like a soft requirement right now, but will eventually become a hard requirement. Uh, for example, we expanded the floodplain overlay district and the, uh, the regulations of the flood damage prevention ordinance to, uh, both the one-hundred-year and five-hundred-year floodplain. As of right now, it's typically only requires those regulations within one-hundred-year floodplain. But FEMA is in the process of upping their regulations to the five-hundred-year. So it's slightly getting out a little bit ahead of what's required, but those requirements are basically in the works. And so there, there's the recommended standards now, even though they're a little bit above. But, uh, they'll eventually, will most likely become the hard.
Could I suggest that maybe that's one of the things that we slowly walk up? Because I'm in the middle of a project that we've been working on for several years. And we had no expectations of it being two feet above what, what is required by FEMA. And, uh, you know, so two, adding two feet to something, even though we're going through all of everything properly, that's a lot of extra cost. A lot of extra costs.
Absolutely. So I'm just looking to see if I can find the section about that. Yeah, I, well. Um, so the flood damage prevention ordinance identified, which it's, um, so on page sixteen is where it specifies like base flood elevation requirements. Um, so it's all new construction or substantial improvements. So my interpretation of that would be any construction that is underway.
If you haven't, if you're in the planning stage and doing your hydraulic studies, et cetera, that's not breaking ground.
Right.
I'm not gonna get into this, but the, the, the regulations that are in place at the time you initiate a permit, determine what pressure you follow after that. So if you've gone in and submitted some type of permit, that even if they change the regulations or the ordinance after that, you should still be able to use whatever the permits, harness or at the time of the initiation.
Right, yes.
That's, that's what I meant to say. I missed, so thank you.
That was kind of like mud there, but thank you.
If, if obviously a permit, or some sort of permit has an issue, it's, the regulations are paused where they're at and that's what applies.
Right.
Same goes for the zoning ordinance.
Get an aspirate permit.
All right, next thing, uh, not getting into specific and specific persons' properties, but they're too picked of the way some of these properties were. I mean, there's a house in twenty-one that is a fixed brick on a slab house. Been a residence for thirty years. It's now commercial. There is a business that is on, has a stick building that is zoned residential. Where I don't, I mean, I don't understand how we.
Right.
Got off track there.
So the base is the future land use map. So there's, uh, the future land use map shows a kind of a slow progression towards turning Highway twenty-one into strictly a commercial corridor. And so the balance we have to strike is limiting the creation of public zone and uses right now, but still staying within the vision of the future land use map. So it's attempting to shift, um, towards the future land use map, but leaving, but trying to slowly get to, to that, to not make a huge overwhelming change.
I think it will be addressed, like you said, with grandfathered in and having an objection on record. But I just wanted to point out there, there's lots of gray area when you're from the outside looking in.
Absolutely.
So, but again, I think those things, those problems will be addressed. Uh, the last point I'd like to make or ask is something that we haven't, uh, mentioned at all. Uh, how are these zones gonna affect our property taxes? Is there, have we been in any consultation with the appraisal district?
So the zoning, uh, will not affect how your property is taxed. So the tax station, the, the code, the state code that's applied for the property tax is based on the active land use, not the zoning designation. So they'll be kind of two separate things.
Is that in writing somewhere? Is that a statute?
I mean, so that, so it's not based off, so that increase isn't based off of a change in the tax code? So, you know, it's, let's say you have an undeveloped lot and it's taxed residential, or, uh, uh, zoned residential. But the tax code applied is agricultural. So it's taxed as an agricultural, although you're allowed to build residential uses on it. So being allowed to build residential uses won't change that tax code to the tax rate that's applied. But because certain, uh, tax designations are more favorable for development, so there's like a higher value, that'll not push the value of the property itself up.
So do.
Right, so, yes. Absolutely, absolutely.
So do we have a liaison between appraisal district and our zoning commission council at the moment?
There, there have been conversations because there, it's two separate procedures. So that how specifically the process of how the county taxes your property will not be affected. Your property value is maybe affected, but that's not, that's not a specific.
I just see that, that's one of those baby step questions. I see it as a problem because I'm, I'm, probably everybody in this room, their property taxes have gone up every year for ever how long?
Right.
And, and that's part of the old Caldwell, the people are having a problem with the growth and property values going up. We want that growth, but we also, I would like to see some reassurance that just because we're zoned commercial, the appraisal district's not gonna jump up, drive it, and then here we are going up twenty, thirty percent. I think, I think that that's something the council needs to look into, is to have a liaison with the appraisal district to where we have something in writing, some kind of plan or idea to protect, protect our citizens and constituents.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a very good point. We don't, we definitely do not want to come in here and make your property taxes higher. That's not the purpose. And so we want to make sure that any change here today is not going to hurt you guys in short term or the long term. So I, I appreciate that. We're looking to.
Well, I just want to, again, thank everybody. I, uh, as most of you know, I'm pro Caldwell. Gonna continue to try to bring new things to Caldwell. And I just hope this zoning doesn't affect it. Thank you.
Anyone else for the zoning ordinance?
Are y'all making a decision in this?
So, yeah, so it's not an adoption. It's basically approving this draft that's like satisfactory and so whatever. Look, that's the decision.
We're taking into consideration all of the new.
Can I have one, if we have another one of these meetings? They're not getting, playing you guys is awful up there.
Council, do you have any questions or comments or discussion that you'd like to talk to Nick or Ann about?
Yeah.
Okay. Will you go back over the council discussion and action and what next steps are before they do anything?
Yes, so, um, so there are four options available. If you are content and happy with the zoning ordinance as is, you can approve it. And then we can basically turn this into a final report, uh, come back for a second hearing for approval of that final report and then adoption. Uh, and we're trying to get some clarification specifically about if that needs to be a separate process. If we didn't, if approval of the final report and adoption have to be separate hearings, we're getting some clarification about that. Um, if you, if there are, you know, smaller changes that you want to make, um, and then smaller, you can make. Uh, you can conditionally approve and specify that, uh, what changes need to be made. Uh, and you put those into the final report, schedule a final report hearing, say, for the next council meeting in December, and come back with a final report for the approval of that. Um, if you would like more time for conversation in a public hearing sense like this, um, you can table and we can return for another public hearing, say, next month. Or if you would like, uh, if there are larger changes that you think need to be made, we can, uh, you can reject and we can have another workshop, like, um, how we did, uh, in August and October, and then return for a new preliminary report, like, to those changes. So those are the options.
So, so based off of what you heard in emails being received, I mean, is that, Paul, under we can conditionally approve it? Or do you need more time to review what's been presented to you tonight to propose your final?
I, I think, um, I don't think any of the changes that have been suggested tonight constitute like significant changes that need a, a whole new preliminary report. So like, for this to start over. Um, I think there are small enough changes that this is something else we could update for the final reports return. Um, and so that's my, my reading of the situation.
If, if we conditionally approve and you said we can go back, what happens when we, would that be a public hearing also?
Yes.
And so what happened, do we just keep doing it if, if there is enough complaints or concerns?
Thank you for the word.
Concerns that we can, uh, keep doing a similar deal like tonight and still conditionally approve it? And then if we think that's good enough, we can go.
Go to approve? Yes, so, yes, so let's say you were conditionally approved, come back with, uh, so the final report with those smaller changes. Can you still say there are some changes that we would like to see? Um, I don't know, is that the exact legal procedure, but, um, we could still go from there. Because the decision then is to approve the final reports as it is for adoption or to make some additional changes. So then we could update for another report with those changes and make that same.
So we would have an opportunity?
Yeah, so basically you can conditionally approve the final report until it's still like.
Okay, okay, that's what I was getting at. That's clearer than you thought.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have those listed. Oh, on the slides.
Right.
So, oh, so with the, I'm, please start, stop, you tell me. Oh, you know, okay, so, um, the specification for, there's specification within the flood damage prevention ordinance and, uh, within the overlay that, um, you, uh, by building a structure in the floodplain, it cannot, uh, increase the flooding risk to surrounding properties. So the flood damage prevention ordinance, you specify that you need a hydrology study to show that the presence of this is not going to increase flood levels. And so there is specifically, um, the, the intention of to make sure that a structure, building of a new development of a structure does not push flooding hazard on the surrounding property, the cause of flooding on the property.
Who's gonna enforce it?
That's the, so that's the, uh, would be enforced through the development procedure. So, um, if somebody is, uh, applying license or, uh, preliminary, uh, preliminary class for a subdivision or, uh, the building permit that's applied, that because this is a floodplain, you need a floodplain development permit. And to get a floodplain development permit, you need to meet these specifications and they have to have a completed hydrology study that shows that it's not going to increase flood levels. So it's all part of like the development process to be, to get the necessary.
So you keep saying floodplain. Is that just some specific areas in Caldwell? Or is it everywhere in South City Lynn?
Yeah, so it's a specific, um, area identified by FEMA as, um, basically, there's a, in any, like, storm, there's a one percent chance that that area will flood. And so that's how we get to the hundred-year floodplain. And so I don't know if you can see, maybe doing it, this area that's kind of has like the blue, uh, hatching, um, up around where Highway twenty-one and thirty-six meets, kind of quote unquote from there. That's, um, that's the floodplain overlay.
So if you're not in floodplain, then none of this means anything?
Correct. So it's just within that area.
There are specific restrictions in the subdivision ordinance and the construction design guidelines that do address the other areas that aren't in a designated flood area, special flood hazard area. So that is a part of the other updates that we're working on as well.
Thank you.
So, plan development? So for plan development, um, do you know what's the minimum size? And if, if it's the same, I'm going to district, right? Is it the same if, if it's new development as if it's infill development? Did we, do you have a question on that?
So a P U D is more specifically for, uh, larger scale developments with a greater mix of flood difference. I would be hyped, so say like a subdivision, like the one off of County Road three hundred. That's not a P U D, but a P U D would be something like, uh, uh, a neighborhood that has available downtown, like downtown commercial district or something like that. And so all of it is regulated by, um, section seven or article seven. And so that will specify procedures and what, like, what's allowed. Uh, so I'd well be, I'd direct you to that for more specific information. Um, so that, yeah, so, so that's, you know, that's.
Is it still up by nature?
Um, I don't remember off the top of my head. I think if that's specified, there is a minimum size, uh, that you would need. If I can't remember off the top of my head, I don't want to give any incorrect information. You're welcome to email me. If you have any questions, I am always looking for them. Thank you.
Okay. Next, for public hearing. I can take action now? Okay, so. We have a motion to approve, conditionally approve, table or reject the zoning ordinance.
Preliminary?
Preliminary zoning ordinance.
I would make the recommendation that we table it.
One more workshop?
I'll second that. I just, I know we're not going to redesign the whole thing, but we didn't even look at, you know, some areas. And so all the notes are written down, everything's reported. And then, you know, of course, have it so everybody be able to come back and ask the same questions, see if, you know, we got everything, you know, answered. And then, so I'll say it'd be a whole lot on itself. But hopefully given that, you know, that next time, then then we'll be able to see how it will.
Yes. I asked a question before you said.
But you could, you could.
I can answer. Can I ask a question? Well, no, he hadn't said that he allows me to. Oh, okay. If we table this, then we have to go through mailing out to everyone again and go through the whole process?
For every public hearing regarding zoning ordinance, there has to be citywide notice plus a notice to inform users. So citywide, it has to be, affected property owners have to be notified. So it affects the whole city. And so any kind of official public hearing like this, we wouldn't need to send out that mail notice. But if it is something like a workshop where it's just a conversation and it's not like an official decision being made, we do not need to send out a mailed notice. We could just submit, put a notice in paper. So if we wanted to have a workshop like how we did before, we don't need that through that ranging level of notice. But if we have another public hearing like this, we would need that. So we would need that for the final report hearing, potential adoption.
Just to make clear for me, because I'm sure everybody else knows, but if we conditionally approve, we're in, or versus table, we're basically doing the same thing as table, conditionally approving if we still want to discuss. Is that correct?
So the initially approved would mean we don't need another preliminary report hearing. Tableting would, would mean you would need another one of these where the council would have to then take action to approve it.
Okay. I just wanted to make it clear.
I think we heard from the public that, you know, we're not, not rushing to it. This is something we know that needs to be done. And this is my opportunity to come back.
You can do that under conditionally. You can do as many conditionally approves as we need.
We have a motion to table and a second on favor of tabling the preliminary zoning ordinance. Any opposed? Okay, for the record, motion passes.
Now, but counsel, if you would like us to send out a public notice like we did for the next workshop, for the discussion to continue, so that everyone is still made aware of it, we can do that.
That goes up really great normally, a lot of it for separate.
It would be separate. I mean, if you would like us to do a separate notice.
If I ask you for feedback, seems like we'd want to send the notice. So we're going to go that route. I'm, I'm for the notice. But I just, that's my opinion.
Okay, next. Grantworth's presentation on the components of a preliminary report of the updated building codes and related amendments associated with the Texas Community Development Block Planning Grant Contract Number 23160012846. All of that discussion, possible action.
So this is another extended presentation from Nick from Grantworth's. So I'm going to turn it over to him to talk about the amendments that we're doing related to the building codes.
It's actually going to be much shorter than my previous presentation. It's going to be a tight five. So this is much less. So the second preliminary report for council tonight covers the second part of the RCP draft that is adoption of updated building codes. And so like the zoning ordinance, the adoption of updated building codes comes directly from the comprehensive plan. So within the comprehensive plan, there are specific actions that are identified to update the building codes periodically to support various goals. So goal 3.1 is to enhance the community's character and manage growth and development. One of the recommended actions to achieve this is to assess the city building codes every three to five years and update as needed. And goal 4.2 is to enhance the quality of the existing neighborhoods by promoting property maintenance. They recommend achieving this through enforcing the International Property Maintenance Code and the International Existing Building Code. And so tonight I'll be discussing what codes we recommend adopting as well as any associated amendments. The first code we recommend adopting is the International Building Code 2021. We recommend adopting with amendments for consistency with city procedures, ordinances, or provisions for the registration of contractors, for additions to work exempt from permits. And I wanted to highlight that the last minute change yesterday, we removed one of the work that would be exempt from permits in the additions. So how it was, the preliminary version that you guys were sent was that fences of a certain size and certain type would be exempt from requiring a building permit. But hopefully you received an updated version of this. We removed that amendment so that fences like that would still need to get a building permit. We also included some amendments for minor changes to standards for interior finishes, marking of access doors, and closing of occupant loads. And we do not recommend that any appendices be included in this code. The International Residential Code 2021, we recommend adopting with amendments for consistency with city procedures and ordinances, in particular the flood damage prevention ordinance, with some additions to work exempt from permits, with some additional definitions, with an added section that covers standards for lawn irrigation systems, and for an updated tiny home definition that matches the other city regulations and is consistent with what has been discussed with council at other workshops for the zoning. We recommend adopting appendices AD, manufactured homes used as dwellings, appendix AH patio covers, appendix AN venting methods, appendix AQ tiny homes. The International Existing Building Code 2021, we recommend adopting as is with no amendments and no appendices. The International Plumbing Code 2021, we recommend adopting with amendments for consistency with city procedures, consistency with standard local and regional construction practices for some additional improvements to public health, particularly regarding higher ceiling standards for contaminants to allow bottled water dispensers instead of drinking fountains, and for increased safety for private sewer systems. And we recommend no appendices to be included. The International Fuel Gas Code 2021, we recommend adopting with amendments for consistency to remove requirements regarding appliances and garages, and the use of copper pipes, and for additional standards for testing pressure, and again, no appendices to be included. The International Mechanical Code 2021, we recommend adopting with amendments for consistency and to remove requirements regarding appliances and garages, and that's that same requirement from the previous code. And again, no appendices to be included. The National Electric Code 2023, we recommend adopting with additional standards for protection, number and location of electrical meters and disconnecting means, and again, no appendices to be included. The International Property Maintenance Code 2021, we recommend adopting with amendments for consistency to remove, again, those same requirements regarding appliances and garages, and to adapt the code to some of the local contexts of Caldwell, specifically to require window screens year round and to only require heating during certain times of the year. And again, no appendices to be included. The International Conservation penalty Conservation Code 2021, we recommend adopting with amendments for consistency for additional exceptions to the testing of thermal envelopes, for additional information to be provided on certificates, for amendments to the standards for installation of electrical boxes and air ducts, and to remove requirements for dimmers and sensors on interior lights. Again, no appendices to be included. The International Fire Code 2021, we recommend adopting with amendments for consistency to insert dates where required, to eliminate the requirement of street clear systems within temporary tents, and to allow the sale of fireworks. And then finally, to add some additional protections for the underground storage of combustible liquids. Again, for these last two, no appendices to be included. So those are all the code before council tonight for the preliminary report. And the options are the same, to approve, initially approve, table, or reject.
I see anyone in the audience wanting to speak about building codes? This is a boring one.
Could you explain more about the elimination of requirements for appliances and garages?
Yes. So let me pull that up. I'm sorry. I don't have it written down because it's removed from the code, essentially.
It just seemed like if we have an appliances in a garage, it's also an enclosed space. And if we're removing any kind of regulation, we're increasing the chance of fires. We've got safety problems here.
I know for some older homes that I found, that was a dealt where you still build. So I don't have a choice in building on the utility rooms of the house. I can afford it at times. So $2. They're just removing the requirement. That's all there is.
Well, what is, we're not saying what is the requirement?
Well, partly the new, I guess the new building codes for some of these homes would be that they need to be inside here in your structure, not in the garage. As I mentioned, right, you said they're in the garage. And that's, that's just where it was. That's where they built it. So it's just removal of that. It's not, it's not, that's uncontinued. It's just, we're just removing the requirement. Is that what Burt did you? Yeah, we're moving the requirement.
Yeah. So this is all for you, but not for homes that are actively constructed and brought up to this?
That's, that's my understanding.
I, I had the language that we're moving. So appliances located in private garages should be installed with a minimum clearance of six feet above the floor.
So basically, whenever you have, the international fuel gas code essentially makes it to where if you were going to put a water heater in the garage, they're going to make you put it six feet above the floor. And that's not exactly consistent with what we see a lot of times. So we're essentially deleting that section, making it allowable for water heaters and gas-fired appliances to be installed lower to the floor. But also, if it's in a garage, it has to be 18 inches minimum off the bottom of the floor unless it meets the plain vapor resistant type water heater. And so essentially, that's what it is. We're, because that's not exactly consistent with what we see around here. So that's essentially why we delete the section.
Yeah, of course. Yes, of course. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Sorry, one more question. So like the zoning, if someone's doing like a remodel project, is there a threshold of like how much that remodel would require them to update to the new building codes?
Yeah, if it's, if it's commercial.
Or residential.
Right. So if it's residential, from what I understand, then not a lot. Like if the, if the existing part or like whatever's existing is staying the same, then you can, as long as that met code at one point in time, then it's allowed to stay as is. But whatever you're changing, those are the parts that have to come up to current code. So like, for instance, if you're adding new walls, you're changing, adding a room or something like that. Well, if we're looking at the roof framing and, you know, okay, maybe it's not in the greatest condition. It's an existing house, but you're not changing the roof framing unless it's a hazard, which would have never met codes that were passing, you know, previously. We're not going to make you bring that up to code unless essentially it's like hazard.
Okay. So same to. Approved, conditionally approved, table or reject?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have any additional emails prior to tonight?
Not related to zoning.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, conditionally approve, table or reject the preliminary report of updated building codes.
I'm going to reapprove this.
We have a second to approve. All in favor of approving the preliminary report, the building codes, raise your hand. All in favor, motion passes.
There, I think there's some people that would like to have a break.
Yes, we'll take a five-minute recess. The next item on the agenda is the solicitation and panhandling ordinance, number 111924, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Caldwell, Texas, repeal Chapter 4 Business Regulation, Article 4.03 Peddlers of the City of Caldwell Code ordinances in its entirety, and replace as follows: Providing for regulations and requirements of peddler, solicitor, canvasser, itinerant, vendor, and panhandling; establishing protections for homeowners designed to avoid peddlers, solicitors, canvassers, itinerant vendors, and panhandlers; providing for severability; establishing a penalty; and providing for an effective date.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, this is a ordinance to basically get us updated to what state laws have had changes to, and then also make sure that we have something in place for panhandling currently, or solicitation ordinance, so that it covers anything about panhandling. So that was something that we brought forward to staff attention. And so basically, that's the overview of everything. For licensing and licenses for mandatory group peddlers, solicitor, itinerant vendors, but not for canvassers. Application is required per channel for organization, or anybody that's, you know, going door-to-door to sell things. And then they have to have a background check, and then they were also the subject to investigation if something came back on that background check. Currently, we don't do that. Prohibitions, so no solicitation is allowed on properties with no soliciting signs during residential hours or restricted hours, 8:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m., or using aggressive behavior. This is specific restrictions to panhandling. So time restrictions for panhandling would be prohibited between 8:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m., placing restriction on panhandling so that we would not be allowed within 200 feet of a sensitive area like ATM, a fuel pump, or dining areas, public transportation stops without permission. Manner restrictions, so aggressive action, blocking pathways, or profane language, or approaching within three feet of a person or van. False or misleading statements, so misrepresentation such as pretending to be homeless or disabled is prohibited. And the penalties and violations within purr based on the code. And then solicitation authorization, so certain charitable organizations may solicit donations on roadways with prior authorization for liability, for pain liability insurance coverage. That is the synopsis of the ordinance. Is there any specific questions?
Okay, so I was looking at that, and it is fixed into debate in January, and girl scout ticket time. So that's a real big deal, and that is their big fundraiser. So do girl scouts have to come to the city to get permission to go door-to-door?
No, so as long as they have that permission from wherever they're going to be soliciting at, or if they are going around door-to-door, then, yeah, I would be considered a canvasser in that sense.
So that falls under like, when fire department comes door-to-door to sell their big fundraiser tickets, civic organizations, school groups, same category?
Correct.
No need for background check?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yes. I worked three hailstorms with what's in the long. The last hailstorm happened at 5:00 p.m., and we had a record of a softball-sized hail on 102. And there's what they call hail reports, and it's on every one of these roof responders. And we had people, at 7:00 p.m., they were knocking on everybody's door in Caldwell on that same Sunday night. I'm asking a question now, do those people, those citizens say, what, have you registered with the city? Are they gonna, I mean, because that's a vendor, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that these citizens have the right to tell them that they should go register with the city and get a permit to solicit this thing.
Correct, yes.
I mean, because that's a, that's an extreme, but it was extreme, but you have just.
And that's, that's the, that's the next thing for this ordinance.
The City of Giddings, I worked two with them. They require them, that contractor to be registered. So keep me a guy that is selling roofs, or, you know, he's got to be a registered contractor with the city.
So that would not be directly related?
I understand, but it's something, it's something, and they have to, it requires them, they require them to have a certain amount of insurance as a contractor. I'm just putting that up because I worked with five of them. What about scam artists? I mean, you read about all the time where the roofer's gonna be, get the money and leave. Is there any way we, when they file for a permit, is there any way to check their business?
Legitimacy?
That's a good word.
That is a good word. So I think as far as the process go, we could verify that the business is legitimate, because they do have to provide their EIN number that's issued when they are a registered business for the state. So that would be a way that we would be able to verify that.
Of course, wasn't there something in that ordinance that says that we provide them with badging as well?
Yeah, so they will be issued a, like, actual permit from here on out, once this is adopted. So they would have a paper permit with like a badge that they would have to have on them to have proof if somebody was, to ask if they had a solicitor's permit.
And it's real simple. If they don't have it, you call us and we'll come out with a ticket.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt to panhandling?
Well, this is a public hearing. Is there any color?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. Any comments about the solicitation and panhandling ordinance? Okay, now, do we have a motion to adopt?
I made a motion.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, I mean, all, I'm tired. All in favor, motion passes. Next, submission of a final plat for a detention pond in common area as part of the Arrowhead Farm subdivision for approximately 14.428 acres, parcel ID number 1037029.
So this is the area that we're talking about off of 10300, adjacent to the existing Arrowhead Farm subdivision, page 1, 2, and 3. Most of y'all have probably noticed that it is already there. This is just plating it out separately. Majority of that property is in special flood hazard area, and so this would keep the development from having any kind of residences being built where it would be in a flood hazard area. So this kind of goes along with the new zoning that we talked about a little bit ago. So it is already existing. The detention pond is going to be a dry pond. It won't hold water unless there's a major rain event. But it is meant to help slow down the water from getting into the Davis Creek watershed area, so that it helps decrease the overall runoff that's coming out of the Arrowhead Farm subdivision. And then Jeff Robertson with the clerk Brown, he is here, he's right there. So he can ask or answer any questions that you might have related to this. This is a public comment, a public hearing, so if there's any public questions or comments you want to look at. It is a public admin entity, so it will connect to Davis Creek Park, and there is a, you know, piece of the sidewalk that is already on the dam part of the detention pond, so it will have some connection and benefit to the overall city.
Any discussions asked? Anyone from the audience tonight for discussion on this one? Do we have a motion to approve the final plat for a detention pond?
Need for approval.
Second?
Oh, sir.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, regular agenda items. Resolution number 112024A, amending the communications policies and procedures to adopt a covered applications and prohibited technology policy as required by Chapter 620 of the Texas Government Code, providing for severability and savings clause, and setting an effective date.
Mayor and Council, in August of 2023, council adopted a communications policies and procedure. The resolution presented today proposes amendments to align those policies with Senate Bill 1893, which prohibits certain social media apps that includes TikTok on government devices, with exceptions provided for law enforcement and information security needs.
So in other words, city-issue phones can't have TikTok. Got it. Just Charles. Yours, just Charles. Any discussion on this? Pretty cut and dry. Okay, motion to adopt the resolution? Second? All in favor of adopting Resolution Number 112024A, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, granting the city administrator permission to submit a request or proposal for grant administration services regarding the Texas Department of Agriculture Community Development Block Grant 2025 Downtown Re revitalization Program.
So Mayor and Council, I'm wearing my main street hat now. And so basically, this item is to allow us to go after a request or proposal for grant administration services in regards to the downtown revitalization program due to the age. And basically, Texas Department of Agriculture Community Development Block Grant aims to support eligible rural communities in enhancing and improving their downtown areas. The main purpose is to promote economic development, improve public infrastructure, support the revitalization of central business districts, and rural Texas communities. Eligibility for this is only non-entitled communities and rural areas not receiving direct CPG funding from HUD or LFO. And then applicants must demonstrate a need for downtown revitalization, showing economic and social impact of the proposed project. So your normal CPG grant funding process and requirements for that basic process. The funding, so it provides grant funding for projects like sidewalk repairs, lighting upgrades, building design improvements, and other public infrastructure enhancements to support economic activity. Grant amounts are matching, and matching requirements may vary depending on the scope of the project and specific program guidelines. The grant has a minimum of a 3.5% cash match by the city, and so in the 20.5 fiscal year CIP budget, government approved $950,000 towards this project, and that is over the amount that is needed for the 3.5%. So we made sure that there was a little extra in there depending on if there was other needs that we needed to address while we're working on that project if it's not in the scope. The project focus is going to be an emphasis placed on improving the accessibility, safety, and overall appeal of the downtown. Mainly, we're talking about the intersections of Fox Street and Echo Street, and then Echo Street and Fox Street. Everyone, I slightly noticed that the Tech Scott Woodgate 30 had the sidewalk enhancements done probably in 2013, and that was all through the Tech Scott side of it because that is the Tech Scott main street road. And so the ADA improvements that were made at that time did not get transferred over to the other side of the square. So this would be the project that we could apply for through the grant to actually get that done. Along with that, we need to talk about some drainage issues along the Fox Street area, and kind of back down the way over here behind City Hall and Christian here. And so that could also potentially be as part of the project scope. And this would be the preliminary project scope. Obviously, we're going out for grant administration services at this time, so we haven't actually defined the overall project, but this is kind of the area that we're thinking in regards to this grant program. Is there any questions?
You got your ready raise your right hand over 20 seconds?
Yes, the notice is ready to go out.
Any discussions asked? Hold on a second?
Second.
All in favor of granting the city administrator permission to submit a request for proposal for grant administration, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes. Next, request for approval of a front setback variance to accommodate a carport addition at 1804 Sherrill Drive submitted by A.R. Dotman.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Blackman, residents of Caldwell, are interested in requesting a variance for the property located at 1804 Sherrill Drive, Caldwell, Texas. The variance would be for a front setback variance for the carport to be placed over the existing driveway. The proposed carport is going to be metal frame construction and is planned to be placed over the driveway, which is placed within, this is the chicken park, 20 or 25 feet of the front setback that their property has. The Blackmans have a new car that they would like to protect in the weather as well as well as protect the inside of their home from rain that enters their home through the double doors located on the southern side of their home facing Cheryl Drive. The carport would be able to provide a solution for both issues. The carport would be constructed out of metal. The Blackmans do not have a survey for their property. We do know there is a five foot utility easement that extends from their property line inward towards the house, uh, for the city's water, water line. From a plat at the courthouse, we did see that the property has a twenty foot front setback. But I was, but I also found some conflicting information when Mr. Blackman was able to obtain a survey from the neighbors at eighteen oh six Cheryl, showing that they have a twenty-five foot front setback for their property and not a twenty foot front setback. I went on site to try and locate the property pins, but could not find either of the front property pins. From what I could figure out from the neighbor's survey, the expansion joint in the driveway at eighteen oh four Cheryl Drive appears to be close to where the property line is located. Furthermore, the city's water meter and soup and city sewer cleanup do line up with this expansion joint in the driveway, which further leads me to believe that the front setback for this property is a twenty-five foot, but without a survey, we can't be sure. The carport for the Blackmans would, uh, the carports Blackmans would like to build is a seventeen point three foot wide by twenty foot long by eight foot tall. If the property has a twenty foot front setback, then the carport would be built up to the property line and over the utility easement. But if the front setback is twenty-five foot, then the carport would be built up to the edge of the five foot, uh, utility easement. It would be five foot from the property line up to the edge of the utility easement. Um, like I said, the sewer line and the water line, uh, they line up with the, um, expansion joint in the driveway, which is twenty-five feet from the edge of the house. And so if the Blackmans were to build a twenty foot long carport down the driveway, common sense leads me to believe that it'd still be, you know, five feet away from those city utilities. Uh, the sewer is on the other side of the road. It's just a water line. Um, with all that being said, uh, of course, am I clicking through those? Sorry. So according to section ten eighteen of the code of ordinance, as this allows for the council to grant variances under this section, uh, hardship, where the city finds that extraordinary hardships may result from strict compliance with these regulations, it may vary the regulation, uh, so that substantial justice may be done in the public interest secured, provided that such variation will not have the effect of nullifying the intent and the purpose of the city's comprehensive plan. These regulations are any terms of the building codes. Staff would recommend denial of this request because there is not existing hardship. Uh, the council can determine if they want to approve, deny, or require that a survey be performed before approval is granted or tabled until there's a survey and a call from there. Uh, but of course, if you maybe expose that. So, yeah, or, yeah, so that expansion joint at the rear of the truck and the car there is the one that I believe that marks the property line, uh, for the house, uh, or for the property at eighteen oh four Cheryl Drive. Uh, go scroll to the next one. And that's the one that, uh, the city sewer and water. Uh, they have a weathered door that, you know, they've painted multiple times. Uh, that's at the, that's at the front of the, uh, the driveway there. And, uh, but because of the weather, just the sun, the rain and everything, if they had to repaint it multiple times. And then you can, uh, see that they've had some water into the house, uh, and they got some work flooring from some water damage that's coming through those doors. The carports would, you know, connect to the house and provide that protection from the rain. And then just across the street, maybe one or two houses down, there is an existing carport for a neighbor's property, uh, that I don't believe ever went through the permitting process or requested variance to council. Mr. Blackman, anything you want to add?
Yeah, I think you pretty much covered it. I was just going to say that about six or seven years ago, we had enclosed, well, we didn't have to. I requested to enclose the garage because it was not big enough to get two vehicles in anyway. And I needed the extra space. So we had it enclosed. And looking at, we looked at the picture of where the cars were parked in front of it. The people that enclosed our garage, if you didn't see the, uh, driveway there, they did such a fantastic job. It just looked like it was the original room. So we were real pleased with it, but over the years, the wind and the rain and the, uh, sun, it just deteriorates the finish on those doors. And we go through and we have to sand them off and restain them and that. And then now I noticed recently that the floor inside is start to buckle from where it's gotten wet. And so I talked to Jeff McManus, who studies the wood floor. And he said, yeah, we could go in and put, you know, uh, what do you call it?
Oning?
No, I'm thinking flooring, the ceramic flooring or something, you know, more something type of tile to preserve that. And, you know, obviously maybe an oning or something, you know, to keep the weather from getting in that area. It's just a request. I know it's not an emergency type thing, but it sure would have, you know, would probably help with that, uh, room particularly. And possibly even if we had a carport, might be lower some of the electrical bills because there wouldn't be as much heat going through that door. So that would just be part of the question.
Joey, you said the sewer cleanout is underneath the slab? No?
So it, uh, it lines up with that expansion joint in that, uh, driveway, um, which?
Which way, east, west, nor south?
Um, good question. Uh, it would be west. Uh, you know, if you continue down Cheryl Drive there, sewer cleanout is down that way.
But it's not underneath the slab?
Uh, no, the sewer cleanout for the city's.
That's always the eyes I ask you.
It is, uh, and, and, uh, from what I could see.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, uh, yes. Uh, and so, and the sewer is on the other side of the street, but the water is on the same side of the street. The city's water line is on the same side of the street as.
So do you recommend we deny it because of not a hardship, which means they can put it up because of the twenty-five foot?
No, um, the, because there's not a hardship existing where, you know, the property setbacks have changed because a larger utility easement was put in or something like that since they bought the property. Uh, since none of that exists, essentially there's not a hardship. And our recommendation is denial because there's not that hardship. And I think that's in line with the code of ordinance as a state law.
So if, um, so if the, uh, expansion, you want?
Yes.
Was it, is that the twenty-five foot? And if that came back as that point would, what would you say at that point?
Yes, um, circle, uh, yes. Uh, so if the, if we still got a survey, uh, the staff recommendation would not change. Um, it would only change if there were that hardship that existed. And then, uh, but yeah, if there was that hardship that existed, then we would recommend.
I understand that, like, staff is looking at the legal definition of a hardship. That doesn't mean council can't approve it. It means it's, you know, it's up to you. We're, we're just looking at the legal definition of what a hardship is. You know, it's still, you know, if you, if you think it's in the best interest of the property and the property owners, then you can absolutely approve it.
Yes, yeah. Um, and I think though, you know, because there is that utility easement on this property, that's the other thing that sort of triggers in my mind. And so knowing that that water meter and sewer cleanout is in line with, and that's typically standard procedure. They'll try and line those things up where the property line is. And whenever I got the neighbor's survey and was able to get a pretty good, uh, I couldn't find the pin, but I got a pretty good idea of it was just like right in front of where the water meter is at. Um, so I essentially took a measurement from the street to where that property pin would be located. And then I went over to their driveway and I measured from the street that distance that I got to that property pin, and it pretty much lines up with that expansion joint. And then I measured from the house to that expansion joint, and that shows twenty-five feet uh, versus on that plaque that we found that shows the twenty feet, um, at the courthouse. And I started thinking about it. I was, I, I wonder if it shows twenty feet at the courthouse because they know there's that five feet utility easement. So maybe it's saying there's a five feet utility easement and then there's a twenty feet uh, setback because there is that five feet, but overall it's twenty-five feet. And if they built a carport from the house, twenty feet out, it wouldn't be covering the utility easement.
Is, is this a permanent or is this a, uh, director set type?
No, it would be, uh, it would be constructed. It wouldn't be a set that's bought.
Yes. If it's size of the carport would not be attached to the house.
Oh, well, I mean, it meets up to that.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, but, but it's gonna, as we referred to earlier, I'm trying to look at the character and you're gonna stay with the character of the neighborhood.
Correct.
See, I was learning earlier.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve or deny the front setback variance?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the setback variance, raise your right hand. All in favor, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Department of Community Reports. Got any comments or concerns about any of those reports?
The Walmart deal is taking care of, and the house has been taken care of, and the carrier house has been.
Uh, any comments, guys? Okay, let's move on to the administrative and elected officials' reports. Yes, please.
All of our major projects are still rolling, we're still rolling ahead. Great addition year thirty-six that we've been talking about could start, I think, next week, right? Maybe this week. So we're gonna get that kind of cleaned out. That whole area should look different. The Temple Street drainage project that we have, Geotech, was out there this week, right? Couldn't remember if it was this week or last week. I don't even know what day. Uh, we're waiting on a report. In the meantime, we're gonna be pushing that out, get some bids on that. We just want to make sure that we do it right. We're gonna kick off meeting with Impact Engineering this week. They're gonna be the ones that handle our pole contacts going forward. Eventually we'll get them to do an audit of all of the poles, make sure we're meeting the loading factors and make sure that we don't have too much hanging from our poles. We're gonna try to identify all the lines that aren't being used anymore and get those off our poles. So that is.
I just reminded that next week we'll be off on Thursday and Friday for Thanksgiving.
I don't have anything.
Just be moving, be moving.
Keep moving, Paul, next.
You see your nose. You answered everything last Thursday.
Okay, I have two things. Are, is the city participating in the Alighted Christmas Parade? December thirteenth, if you can check on that. And then, uh, for everybody in the room, uh, Caldwell is once again the host site for the Brezis Valley Food, Ambrose Food Drive. It is Wednesday, December the fourth. It's two weeks from tomorrow. A fantastic community event. Would love to have you come out, volunteer. Certain sack food, don't make canned food, don't make money. It's just a wonderful event. Um, last year, Charleston County Caldwell alone gathered thirteen thousand pounds of food and sixty thousand dollars, and per capita, we killed everybody. So, uh, and found out we have a corporate sponsor this year, um, our local Walmart who's donating fifteen hundred dollars to us. So that is a fantastic start. So would love to see you on Wednesday, December the fourth, at St. Mary's Catholic Church gym from six A M. to seven P M. So would love to see you there.
I appreciate y'all coming out and I invite y'all back.
Yes.
That's what I'd like to say. They don't usually run this long. Yeah, thank everybody for coming and, uh, excuse me.
Okay, uh, now you guys get to go home because we are meeting in executive session. And again, thank you all very much for coming and, uh, we'll see you in December.
Thank you for your service, Phil City.